All right. Thank you for bearing with us with some technical issues. Again, welcome to the Mesa City Council meeting for the morning of September 28th. All of our council is present with the exception of Mr. Summers, who is present, but present via Zoom. Are you, can you hear us, Mr. Summers?
I can. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item one on our agenda for this meeting is to review our agenda for Monday, October the 2nd. So council, please take a look at that document. Let us know if you have any questions, like any additional information. Mr. Brady, is there anything on Monday's agenda that you would like to let us know anything more about?
Mayor, we have on here the introduction of the drive-through ordinance, but we also have a separate presentation for that scheduled today. So other than that, I don't believe there's anything else specifically.
Great. Yeah. So on the agenda today, we will be talking about the drive-through ordinance and utility enterprise fund forecasts. But council, anything on Monday's agenda you'd like any additional information on? Was that you, Mr. Summers?
It was.
Yes.
For item 8B, and item 8B is just for introduction, so I can get this information next week. It's for Brightbath Daycare Center. I don't necessarily object to the use. My only concern here is the community outreach. This is the daycare center, but it's located in the Frontline Springs Village area, which is a 55 and older community, so they're going to be most directly impacted by it. And it appears that the public outreach was conducted during the summer when a lot of the residents might be gone. So if I could have staff provide me with some information, more specific details as to the community outreach that was conducted, I'd appreciate that. But since this is only for introduction, we don't need a report.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, anything else regarding Monday's agenda?
Mayor.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. On 6B, on the drive-through ordinance, Chris, I guess the PNC board was a denial on that. So we're going to have a presentation to discuss that today to help decide what we're going to do and move forward with.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's it?
All right, counsel. Thank you. Moving forward then, item 2A on our, on this agenda is a presentation and to discuss the utility enterprise fund forecast and provide direction on proposed utility rate adjustments. Gentlemen, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, council. My name is Brian Richel. I'm the Management and Budget Director for the city here. And alongside me is Chris Olby, who is a deputy director in the Office of Management and Budget. So today, we will be going through the utility fund forecast along with the recommended rate adjustments for the utilities. So what we'll be doing is Chris and I will start off with the forecast and some overview. And then the individual departments will then come up and present the specifics behind the rate adjustments to their individual utilities. So just a reminder that the utility operations, the city utilities are operated as separate business centers. However, we do treat all of them as one fund. So when we're doing the forecast, we kind, we take a look at the bottom line of the fund for, the fund, fund balance and the reserves. The reserve balances provide a safety net for unforeseen conditions for what we've seen in the past, for any spikes in commodity costs or any unforeseen expenses that we have. Then the reserve balance can be used also for the smoothing of the rate adjustments year to year. So previously, as you've seen in the forecast, we, we try to smooth out the rate adjustments at an even amount or across the forecast. Some municipalities don't do that. Sometimes you get the rate spike, and we try to minimize that rate spike to try to see what the forecast would be by smoothing those rates out. So we follow five principles, the financial principles. This is just a review of the, we, one of them is the balance of net sources and uses. Another principle is the 20% or higher reserve balance. This helps out with the credit rating agencies when we, when the city goes out for bonds, for construction projects. Also, rate adjustments that are predictable and smooth throughout the forecast. As I mentioned, we try to smooth that out. So it is a little predictable. And then also equity between residential and non-residential rates. We try to make that, that the rates equal. In the past, they've kind of been out of balance, but we try to get those to be equal. And then also, last but not least, the affordability of the utility services themselves. Those are the five principles that we, that we try to abide by when we're doing the forecast.
Brian, roll over to the left. So it's not the last one, previous one about.
Non-residential, residential rates. We're going to see a lot of that affect the adjustments we're proposing today.
That's correct, Mayor, council. We will see a lot of that throughout this, this presentation of, one of the themes throughout this presentation is conservation. And so we have been adjusting commercial a little bit more than residential to get that equity on the rates themselves. So moving to the utility fund forecast.
Yeah. So I'll do an overview of the utility fund forecast. And I'll just start with the recent past. So you can see for the utilities, there's fluctuations year to year. But as Brian mentioned, we manage it as an entire fund. So with respect to the five principles, we've either achieved or worked towards each of those throughout this, this period. About two-thirds of the way down, you can see the total net source and uses. So from 1718 to 2021, that was positive. And then you'll see for the last couple of years, it is slightly negative. And that's due to a planned drawdown of the fund balance. So as, as you're aware, the last couple of years, we've had higher than normal inflation. And the rate adjustments from those years haven't kept up with that growth of inflation. So, so to that, we, looking at that ending reserve balance percentage, so we've been above the 20% that's in our financial principles. And most of those years, we're actually above 30%. So we have that reserve balance to be able to react to, you know, higher than normal inflation or other unforeseen circumstances that Brian mentioned. And then the last thing I'll mention on this slide is, in the past, when we provided forecasts, a lot of these years, we originally projected to be below 30%, below 20%. But we do forecast conservatively, both on revenues and expenses, and departments manage those expenses throughout the year. So the actuals have come in better than, than those projections. So I mentioned inflation. I'll just kind of touch on some of the major utility projects. So a couple of years ago, in the fall of 2021, we had in the forecast, the AMI project, the reused pipeline, the Signalview expansion, and the East Mesa Interconnect pipes project. At that time, the projected cost was 312 million for all four of those. So looking now at the current forecast, we have three of those projects, the AMI, the reused pipeline, and the Signalview expansion. And the current estimate, just for those three projects, is 384 million. So a lot of that's been due to inflation. The East Mesa Interconnect, we've continued on the design, but almost all the construction's been pushed out of the forecast to, to help alleviate those cost pressures on the utility fund. So going into the forecast itself, so on the left-hand side is, is a box referencing those five principles. So for the balance set source and uses, similarly historical, you know, each of the utilities here from year to year kind of can fluctuate. I will note that electric is negative throughout the forecast period. There's a lot of infrastructure updates and projects going on in the electric service area. Things the department will talk about today, and they've talked about in the past, the supply cost pressures. But generally, the net source and uses for each of those utilities is improving from 2324 through the forecast period. And overall, right now, we're projecting a negative net source and uses. The departments in their portion of the presentation are going to talk specifically about inflationary pressures on the specific utilities themselves. But we do project that to improve over the forecast period and be balanced by 2829. And then with respect to the 20% fund balance, so that, that is achieved in the 2223 estimate. 2324, the projection right now is 18.9%. So to get that from 18.9 to 20%, it's about $6 or $7 million. So as I mentioned, we do forecast conservatively. The departments and OMB are looking through revenues and expenses on a monthly basis to manage that back up to above 23, above 20% in 2324. And then looking out in the future, you can see the drawdown of that ending reserve balance. It is below our financial principle. However, our financial policy is that the forecast needs to be at a minimum of 8 to 10% of fund balance reserve. So we are within the city's financial policies.
And the one thing I wanted to point out, too, is if you look at the net sources and uses, and as you noticed, we do have a significant drawdown on, in fiscal year 2324, for, for a lot of the projects and personal services and things like that. However, if you go throughout the forecast, our net sources and uses do become better and start becoming positive towards the end. So even though we are at a 9%, we are looking at a, a good, steady growth in that net sources and uses. So with that, we will have, any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt since we're on, on this page. So the trend, 2829, I know this is way out, and we're not even making any decisions on 2829 right now. I get that. Things change a lot for solid waste and natural gas. And as far as getting, you know, we run negative or near that figure. Then it makes those positive jumps there and making that difference. And then that sources of 45 million, basically. So what is that? Is that from rates or infrastructure paid out?
So yes, Mayor, Councilmember Duff. So the, for specifically for solid waste, as you see in fiscal year 2324, they are negative $7.3 million. What, what that is, is primarily due to capital purchases of the solid waste trucks. So there is a significant lead time on getting those. So where I think we're purchasing about five or six trucks. So in able to do that, we need to do that drawdown there. So we can hopefully get them within the next two or three years before. So that's that negative, that's that. So once we do that purchase, it's a one-time. So then after that, then you see that they're positive.
Okay.
And then some one-time purchases here and there. So that's for the solid waste.
Okay.
So there are, so when you see the fluctuations, and Chris can speak a little bit more on this, is some of those fluctuations are either due to projects, one-time spending, or capital purchases. So that's one of the reasons of some of these that will go negative one year, but then the next year, they'll go positive because that was that one-time purchase in that previous fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
And that, and Mayor and council, that really goes to the idea that Brian mentioned before, that a lot of these, we, sometimes you see those growth in reserves over 30%. But we already know that there's going to be a year where there's going to be a large capital purchase. So we sometimes, that's, we, you know, we're carrying that large reserve, but we also know it's going to get spent down. And so this, if we could go, you know, we can't do it here, but if, if I were to go back and show you every year that we show this part of the forecast, where we are today, going out five, six, seven years, this 9, 10% at the end of the tail, it's pretty typical of kind of how we've done the budgeting. And then if, but if you look at our historical performance in the slide before, we're actually much higher. That's kind of typical. Now, we've, councils kind of expressed some concerns about those significantly high reserves. And so we've tried to get that down a little bit more. And mostly, that's just strategically looking at investment in capital equipment, especially on the solid waste side, that's a big issue. And they could be debt service issues. So we're trying to manage somewhere in between that 20 and 30%. But when we do the forecast, we load it all up, right? We assume all the positions are going to be filled. Everything's, you know, all the costs are coming in. All the projects are happening on time. And the reality is, that won't happen. But from a planning perspective, from a tool to help us strategically align the operations with rates, that's how we do it. Now, we don't come to you and suggest rates. They're going to try to balance it out six years from now. We really look at the first three years. We focus on that net sources and uses and try and make sure that trend is trending in the right direction eventually, because that's the part that will make the biggest difference. And so that's what you'll see going forward. But that's kind of, as we're looking at it from a high level, those are the kind of perspectives we have.
I understand our, our principle, not our principle, but our policy is to stay between 8 and 10%. And I asked you this yesterday, and I can't remember, the 30% does seem rather high. What is the national, there's a national standard for utility reserves?
The national standard, we have conversations with rating agencies. They kind of talk about it. And it's just a matter of how many days of reserve you have to operate on if you stop receiving revenue. So that's where we came up with a 20%.
Okay. The 20% as a.
Yeah, 20% on utilities because of the vulnerability of rates. On the general fund, we speak about, what, 10 to 15% or something like that, so plus so.
Okay. And Brian did mention at the beginning, also having a healthy reserve, you know, around that 20% helps us dramatically with the bond rating for one.
Yes. And that's usually where these conversations take place.
So I'm understanding the pressures on our utilities. And when I looked at the council report on page one, and it showed that the revenue increase that you're suggesting for each utility is still not matching the expense side of what is actually affecting each utility. So in reality, you could be requesting more percentage in the rate increase. I'm.
But we're using that reserve.
But we're using the reserve to draw it down.
Mitigate against those.
And I, I just like people to know that, that we are conscious and trying to be frugal and, you know, not charge excessive funds, like some of our neighboring cities went up 12% and we're asking 3%. So I think.
And that, and council, that's a great point. And I don't want to accuse other colleague of cities.
But we can.
What we do is, well, it's, it's a philosophy, right? That I, we've kind of talked about the council over the years, right? And sometimes I know it's painful because it feels like every year, there's a rate increase. And there really is. And we've, because we've tried to use that word smooth. We try to keep it smallish, right? So it's, it feels like it's more a cost of living increase. Whereas some cities are reluctant to do that. And so what happens, though, is they get so far behind. And you see some cities, now to your point, where they're having to do 12% and 13%, sometimes more than inside of, you know, twice in a year or over a period of time. And we just, you know, philosophically, as we present to you, we just think it's easier for community members, our customers, to plan and anticipate smaller increases over a period of time as opposed to having these big spikes. So that's just the, I guess, philosophy that we've tried to promote as we've looked at this. And but to your point, that's why we don't always suggest rates or, you know, to cover all our costs, because we're trying, we'd be very mindful of that impact on rates and the impact on our residents. And so we're trying to keep those at a smaller level consistently through a longer period of time. We think works better. It's more predictable. It's more, people can do their budgets that way. And so that's how we look at it.
Well, I'm just thinking of all the inflationary pressures, again, as I say, on our utilities. And we're trying to be, you know, proactive and, and bring it down. And I, I understand our reserve funds. But at the end of the day, you know, I've been one to vote not in favor of raising our, our water rates in particular. But I find it's necessary this time just to keep up and keep the pressures off, because everything's tied into our bond ratings and everything we do as a municipality, when we sell our municipal bonds, our GO bonds, or, or even our utility bonds. So I don't know if you have any comments on that. Don't let me ramble.
No, you're, I mean, and it's the cost of water. It's been the biggest, the debt service to build the infrastructure and the cost of water have been the most significant, I guess, increases in any category. Is that fair to say that?
Yeah, Mayor, council, to the city manager's point. And they'll, and the departments will get into a little bit more detail of those cost pressures in their presentation. But yes, the, the majority of is the, the capital costs of these, of these projects. As you saw, what Chris presented, those three big projects, the inflation, the significant inflation that's happening, that's not just on those three projects, but every project that we do, there's a significant inflation factor to those. But then also, the commodity costs have gone significantly higher the past three years because of supply chain issues and things like that. So, and to council member Freeman's point, to where, yes, the expenditures, we do see that are higher in the council report than the revenues coming in. And that has been, as the city manager has pointed out, we have used that fund balance the past few years. As you see in the past, the rate adjustments that we have done have been lower than inflation itself. So, but we are using that fund balance to help that with keeping those rate adjustments lower.
Well, thank you. I just know the snapshot for me on the city council report on page one helped kind of define and, and frame it for me so I could understand it better. So, thank you. So are we going to hear from each of the departments?
Yeah, let's pick up the department. So we can get into the more details. Yeah.
45 more slides.
It is utilities. Once a year, once a year.
I want to go to Director.
Just get through to that.
Jenny, no, he's so.
Welcome.
Morning, Mayor, council. I don't think there's much more for us to say. You covered it so well already. No, that's true to some points. I'm Chris Hasser, Water Resources Director. I'm here with Seth Well, Deputy Director, and Eric Hansen, MA2. So I'm not going to do much of a lead-in because I think there was a really good discussion on, on the themes of what we're going to talk about. So with that, we're going to have Eric just launch right into it.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Within the Water Resources Department, we're going to start with talking about the, the water program. And before we do so, I want to talk a little bit about our customer profile. I know Chris, a few weeks ago, talked extent about our program, our water program. But I want to touch on a little bit of the customers that we serve. So if we start on the pie chart on the right, actually, we can see that on, on average monthly, we serve about 160,000 accounts. And of those accounts, about 10% of them are non-residential. So that would include commercial, interdepartmental, public authorities, the rest of them being residential. So 90% of those accounts that we serve are residential. If you move to the chart on the left now, we actually sell more water to our non-residential customers. So starting in about 2001, our non-residential customers became our majority customer. Non-residential accounts include, you know, also include our multifamily. And of the 30 million K-gals, you'll hear me, you'll hear me use the word K-gal. K-gal is a unit of measure we use to sell our water in. That's 1,000 gallons. You know, of that 30 million K-gals that we sell, over half of that is to our, our non-residential customers. And that is a, that's a change, like I mentioned, from about 2000, 2001, 2002, that we've been adapting to. There's, there's changes. There's, there's, there's pressures on the department. There's increased costs associated with those changes. And so the next slide in front of you kind of outlines those, those, those pressures that we have in the department. These are, these numbers are actuals from fiscal year 2023 to what's forecast in '24. The two big numbers here are the water commodity costs, which we'll go over in the next slide, and the debt service. This debt service is for new projects, well replacements and upgrades, the Central Mesa reused pipeline, transmission main improvements. So that is an increase over last year. But, you know, I really want to touch on these water commodity costs. So the next slide, we go into the increasing water commodity costs. Now, this, this slide in front of you now, it includes both SRP and CAP water. It depicts the actual and forecast commodity costs over time. And it shows you how the city's been addressing those increasing costs, especially as caps has entered their tier drought pricing. So that black line on that chart, those are the actuals of what we have paid. That blue dash line, that's the commodity cost if there was no drought, if the cap tier zero was in place. And so there was no, no increase in water from CAP because there is no drought on the Colorado River. Reality of it is, the red dash line is what the city is forecast to pay for water based on current and forecast drought pricing. We're about to enter tier one of that pricing. And that difference between no drought and where, what we will pay is that difference between that blue line and that red line. You can, last year, we implemented an eight cent per K-gal commodity charge to help cover that cost. This year, we are proposing no change to that. So no increase to that based off of our forecast water commodity costs. Our water, our water commodity costs are part of our rate proposal. This next slide here has two charts on it. The chart on the right, it depicts what our typical users in our different, our different customer classes consume per month. So you can see here, our typical residential account will consume about six K-gals a month, or 6,000 gallons a month. Our commercial customers, about nine K-gals a month. And we use that to calculate what the impact of these rate proposals would be to those customers. So going over to the chart on the left, across the board, staff is proposing a 3% increase to the service charge. Now, the service charge is that fixed charge based off the connection that the customer has to their house, to the meter. And that is actually less than what was forecast during the previous rate cycle for 2024. So that's, I think we had forecast 3.5% would be necessary. But at, we are now proposing a 3% increase to the service charge across the board, to our residential accounts, our non-residential accounts. Same with the drought commodity charge, what we just talked about, no change to the drought commodity charge. But going into the usage charges, so we are proposing a 3% increase to the usage charge. Now, that's the per K-gal charge that is charged to the customers after they consume their initial three K-gals, which is provided to them as a part of their service charge. And by implementing that 3% increase to the usage charge, the typical residential customer would see about a $1.20 month increase, or $1.20, $1.20 per month increase to their monthly water bill. On the commercial side, our commercial customers typically consume about nine K-gals or 9,000 gallons a month. At 5%, at a 5% increase to the usage charge, which is what is being proposed, our typical commercial customer would see about a $2.21 per month increase to their water bill. Our landscape customers, our commercial landscape customers, this usage charge is a little bit higher at 7.5%. But what was actually forecast during the previous rate cycle is what would be required to be proposed now. And given that usage charge, the typical commercial landscape customer would see an increase to their landscape water bill of just a little bit over $10 a month at $10.13.
So Mayor and council, what you see here is, again, kind of going back to the slide where we talked about, while the number of accounts on residential is significantly higher than, than non-residential, the usage has really moved to their side, right? The commercial is using more water, even though there's fewer accounts. So one of the things we're trying to recognize is, is that disbursement of, you know, recovering cost upon the commercial side. So you see that in the 5% versus the 3% on the residential. The landscape really is a recognition of really trying to encourage, or less, to encourage less use of outdoor water, to try to encourage others to, you know, look at other alternatives to watering landscape outside. So that, again, you see, that's why you see these differences and the increases between these different categories. There's a motivation here that trying to accomplish, one, cost recovery, equity between residential and commercial, and then on the landscape specifically, trying to encourage the not to use landscaping that requires a lot of water outside.
Where do, sorry.
Sure.
Where do HOA landscape, watering landscape, is that commercial landscape? What is, what category?
There are some that are, that are on commercial landscape. There are some that are on multi-unit landscape. So it's depending on the organization, the HOA, some of them are on commercial, some of them are on a multi-unit.
So they either get the 5% or the 7.5%.
Yep, that's correct.
Mr. Reddy.
On the service charge, on the reasoning on the keeping it equal throughout residential, commercial. commercial, I'm assuming, you know, commercial will be more intensive on kind of just the basic service charge, right? So why, why is the reason to just keep it flat with residential as well?
I would say, let me just say, I think, remember, what is a service charge? Say it again, Eric, what the service charge is, because it has nothing to do with usage.
Yeah, no.
It's just getting to in front. So really, it's about the same, right? It's putting a pipe in front of, or a line in front of every home with a stopout, right? So it's a cost for us to get it there, and it's really related to the site, building plans. So it's like you're going down a street, right?
Yeah.
Laying a pipe, whether it's commercial on this side or residential on this side. I think our theory is that fixed cost is about the same.
About the same. Even if it's a, you know, you got 1,000 employees.
Well, then they become the size of the meter.
Exactly. Then, then they might move to, instead of a three-quarter inch line, to a one-inch line, which is more expensive, to a two-inch line, which is more expensive. So there is difference in the service fee. And, you know, that goes up by the size of the meter, size of the pipe.
They'll pay that in the meter.
That is another fee.
Yeah, they'll pay that, yeah.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
So I know one of our goals is, is equity between residential and commercial, and looks at kind of looking at a third category of landscape, perhaps. Does this, the disproportionate usage charge increases, does that, are we now at equity between those, those types of uses? Or I think we ought to, we could also debate whether or not we ought to encourage conservation, particularly when it comes to landscaping, by making that, creating a little bit of a disincentive, you know, to overdo it on landscaping.
I think that rate is what we're trying to do, Mayor. And we're trying to, I guess, because last year, we did it, didn't we do the same thing last year, too?
We did.
So we're trying, every year, we're, I mean, if you think about it, we're compounding that, that rate every year. We're trying to encourage that. So, yes.
So would you say we're at parity now between commercial and residential?
We still have ways to go.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, we're not quite there, but we have a, a three, four-year plan to get there. And if I might, if I may say, you know, we kind of, we use our residential tiers as benchmarks, per se, with regards to, you know, what is necessary water and what is discretionary water. And then, you know, the upper, the upper threshold of that first tier, you know, anything that falls within there, that is necessary water, necessary to run your household. Everything above, you know, that tier is more discretionary. And then you get more into the more excessive, you know, in tier three and tier four. But our goal is, and you'll, in, you know, a couple of slides forward, you'll see that, you know, as people's usage has changed, we want to look at shifting those tiers down a little bit as, as people use less water. We want, you know, to encourage people to use around the median, or use around six K gals. You conserve what they can and use price signals to do that.
So the next slide kind of goes to your point a little bit, Mayor, there's more increases in that area.
Okay. Alicia, do you want to join me now?
Just being new to the council, can you give me just a brief historical perspective on this equity issue between residential and commercial? Can I?
How did we get out of whack in the first place?
Yeah, and exactly what you're talking about.
Well, I, I, I think we, we, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, we, it's, it's been, our customer base has shifted over time, you know, whereas we were, you know, more residential and less non-residential, you know, we now have, you know, large, you know, industry coming into our southeast corner of the city. And we are now serving more non-residential customers than residential. And so
And they were paying the same rate?
Or less.
Or less.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but it's, that's just Eric was saying, it's just, this is something that we've just seen the shift change. You said you thought that consumption change happened.
Well, 2020, there was definitely a lot more residential consumption. And then 2021, there was actually more non-residential.
Fairly recent adjustment. So we're trying to make those rates and the revenues we collect, especially on the water, the related consumption, we're trying to balance those out again.
But, but is the reason there's a difference in the first place between residential and not, and commercial, is it because we were in a competitive situation where we had to cut deals with large users and we said, man, we really want those jobs, so we're giving you a good deal on water?
Yeah, I think when we're, you're going to see us address that issue. But it's just overall, right? It's not just, I mean, there are the super users, but just overall, the commercial is just, and it's just a phenomenon, what's happened in the last five to seven years with more commercial accounts and more commercial consumption.
So I think our priority, and you said it, is to focus on really making water as affordable as we can for the minimal residential water user, you know, the, the single mom, you know, who, who needs that to live.
Just someone who lives by themselves, right?
Right.
We're trying to identify that threshold, or that, what do we call it? I always forget. The life, what do we call the life, that?
Sustaining life.
Sustaining life, you know, at that rate.
So we almost want to, in my mind, we almost want to subsidize that. We want, we want to, we don't want to make it, our margin can be as small as possible on that customer.
Yeah, we're just keeping it really basic.
Okay. And so the, the path we're on now, I think it's two or three years from now, you think we're going to have equity between commercial and residential?
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor, yes, we have a plan to do so. I think, switch into the next slide, actually. You know, other non-residential recommendations is a 6% increase to all non-residential water customers to create equity with that residential tier two. And that tier two is where we start to consider that water discretionary and not necessary. So we'd like it on par there with that residential tier two cost per K gal.
So yes, Mayor, we're going to, that's our, that's our goal. We're moving, I mean, it just happened that we kind of went the other direction, so we're trying to bring it back.
And I think there's, there's a message for us on the council here to talk about water conservation and to say, hey, if you're going to be one of those water users that, if you insist on having an acre of green grass in front of your house, that's going to come at a price.
Yeah.
And, and we encourage and incentivize you to look at replacing, you know, ornamental turf with something that's, that's not going to cost you so much.
You're going to see, we're definitely going to see that. We're going to adjust the tiers in the next slide. So why don't you just cover the next?
Yeah, I'll cover these and we'll move on. So we're also proposing a 10% increase to interdepartmental water, and to bring that usage tier, or bring it closer to residential usage tier one. Now, this is necessary water to run the city, so.
This is, the city had negotiated a really good deal for itself a few years ago.
Which side of that negotiation?
Yeah, well, sometimes I get confused. So, but recognizing now, general funds doing imposition where we need to be picking up the same tab, just like anyone else. And it encourages us to look at conservation measures, obviously. But this affects the city, right? This is what we call interdepartmental, but you just, this is the city use, the, what we put out in front of, you know, our own facilities and how we use water, too. So that's what, this is just bringing us in compliance, our parity with what residential pays.
And then one last bullet I want to hit here is the, a 12% increase to our large commercial industrial water users. And we have a, a couple users on there that are paying, paying a rate that is separate from our typical commercial users. And we're proposing a 12% increase to that usage charge that they pay.
What's the pushback we're going to see from those users for that? Any?
You know, what's the good news is a lot of them have begun, have done some, you know, what they projected they were going to use is much, much less than they said. So some, while they've been, they're still major users. We don't think the significance, if we, I think we ran the numbers, it wasn't on it, because it was such a discounted rate from, like, to your point, Mayor, we negotiate those discounted rates. Those 12% are not, we don't think are significant. So, but we'll, we'll see. We don't think they'll put any of them out of business. And, but to the point, I think a lot of them have been very good partners with us, on working on going to more air-cooled operations. And so we have seen, I don't want to speak for all of you, but some of that's been, you've seen some of that, not as much as we had anticipated consumption. Is that fair?
We're seeing that with industry or data centers coming in, that initially, we're going to use the water-cooled technology that consume a tremendous amount of water, that have recognized the path we're on and want to be a good partner. And they've switched their technology to use an electricity for cooling. And then the new data centers coming in, when we're looking at their projected water usage from their engineers, it's slower because they are recognizing, they need to think about the technology they use.
That's good news.
So that, that's some reason for optimism going forward, is that technology's going to come in and those big water users for cooling, for advanced manufacturing and data centers, over time, is that's going to come down?
Yes.
Correct.
I'm just going to put it out there, because I expect me to. So I know this is about, you brought up data centers. So we have two increasing middle right now. And I don't know what their usage is, if it's water or air-cooled. But we will continue to take on data centers that are water-cooled.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we're looking at every developer that comes in, and we have their engineer give, give us their calculations on how much water they're going to use. I have not seen many big water users come in because of the technology choices they're making. But if someone does come in where the water usage and wastewater numbers are elevated, then we have a conversation with them, let them know very clearly that we have an ordinance in place. There's only so much of Mesa's water portfolio that would be available to you. You need to come in, you need to access your own water resources, deed that over to us. And then that's how you would be served water.
Right. And those are for those mega users, those huge, huge data centers that use over, what, 500,000 gallons a day or something like that. Just putting it out there again, like I mentioned, Chandler is doing this thing where they're looking at the zoning of the land and deciding what the appropriate average water use would be for that zoning. And then if it's in another tier, then they say, okay, this would be within our portfolio, but we have to make a decision where we want to be there. And then the third, which might be comparable to our large water users, I don't know. So I think we should have an alert when it goes above the expected water use for the zoning for that property, especially some of, it can be an annex property, so it's not even in our projections as far as we're taking on more water than we projected. So I would just like to have some kind of alert.
I don't know that we have any annex properties.
Because our service area, right?
Yeah, it's our service area. I mean, we have to provide the water to someone who shows up inside the city. We can't just say we're not going to provide.
If it's not in the city and we annex the property and it's not serviced area now.
Well, if it's an annex, if it's a county island, that's, let's call it a county island, we're the service provider, right? So it's in our, it's in our plan to provide those, those areas. We're not, because we're not annexing or allowing annexation that's outside of our current service areas.
So.
And I don't know of any current annexations that are being proposed right now.
There's one, it was just in the paper a few weeks ago. Anyway, I'll bring it. So anyway, that'll be another discussion.
But regardless, those that are like state trust land, they're in our service area.
Okay. And we have those in our projections, even though they're not zoned. I think the zoning is like agriculture or something?
Well, most land, like that state trust land will be ag. And so that's typically, and so they go through the zoning, but they're, I mean, they're in the city's service plan area. We provide the water, the sewer, the
When they go to the rezone, let's say they go to light industrial, heavier, I don't know, whatever. And so they change their zoning, and then that would change. Anyway, that's a longer conversation. We'll keep on going because we, we've got a lot to do.
But I think it's an important
Julie wants to get to the drive-throughs.
I think it's an important point, Councilmember Duff, because I think most of our constituents, I've had people ask me about this, about the annexation in particular, don't understand that there's a service area, and it's within, even if it's not city land today, it's within the service area, and it's accounted for and forecasted for. That, I think, is an important point, but most people don't, don't really.
Inexisted zoning, though.
True. You're right. I mean, that, that, I'm not sure how, I mean, how, how do you forecast for a zoning district that you don't know?
I, I think there's ways to get in the ballpark, and we talked about this a couple weeks ago, but we're updating our master plan right now. And we've learned a lot since we put that ordinance in place on the multiple large meter users. We've learned a lot, and we're going to come back, and we're going to make some adjustments to that policy. And one thing we, we want to do is look at land use and zoning and tailor that to the user coming in. Because if someone wants to come in and build a facility that uses 500,000 gallons a day, but it's on 10 acres, well, that's different than if they have a whole square a mile, right? If they have a whole square a mile, that 500,000 gallons a day probably is under what we're already planning for from a master planning standpoint. So we think we, we've learned a lot, and there's ways to make that better, and to be a little bit more, to encourage conservation, and then to be a little bit more on target.
Well, and for the casual watcher of this meeting, it's probably good to, to point out what we've been talking about. There is a major water user ordinance. So someone comes in, and they're a large scale manufacturer, they're bringing their own water.
Correct.
Yeah.
They're required to.
All right. Thank you. Please proceed with your presentation.
All right. Well, speaking about conservation, part of this proposal is also lowering the upper thresholds for our first and second tiers of our residential water group. So in this case, our first residential tier tops out currently at seven K gals or 7,000 gallons. Our proposal is to bring that down to six, six K gals or 6,000 gallons. And that's where our median user falls. So our median user, our typical user, would not be affected by this, by this shift in the tiers. And same thing with the, the second tier, the upper threshold of that tier, taking that from 15 K gals to 14 K gals. And in that case, the average user would not be impacted as well. In addition, we talked about a 3% increase to the usage charge for our residential customers. For the upper tiers, so for tiers two, three, and four, tier three, or, I'm sorry, tier two, proposing an increase to the usage charge at three and a half percent. And then tiers three and four, which are, can be seen in today's climate as more are excessive users, proposing a 4% increase to the usage charge there for those who fall in those categories. And then finally, a non-residential increase to the excess water surcharge for our landscape customers. Now, the excess surcharge, that's the charge that is applied to your bill when we take the December, January, February months of usage, and then we average them. And anytime a customer goes over that, they're charged a small excess water surcharge to help encourage them to keep consistent in their usage and no surge on the system and, and, you know, and continue conserving. So those are three other measures that we are also proposing as a part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Reddian.
I think I asked this in our, in our other meeting, but do you know how much, how many residents impacted in that first tier that changed from seven to six? As we talk about, you know, looking at our, our small, you know, our tier one, especially folks that, you know, we don't want to increase rates, the need to push that up, how, how many people are affected in that change?
I think we took, so Chris and I took a look at that, and we believe total bills, it was about maybe a million total bills, and then you divide that out by 12 over a month, so maybe about.
Well, how many accounts are in this number?
Accounts are.
Accounts. Because you're, you're saying the median. So the median would be that half of all residential customers fall in that 6,000 or less.
Yeah.
Okay? So we picked that up. So everything else above that is going to go to the other side, 50%. So I don't know what between six and seven, that fraction of.
Little less than 10,000.
Little less than 10,000 counts. But again, we're trying to identify that threshold where we're trying to encourage conservation and this idea that if half of our residential accounts are able to stay at 6,000 or less. And frankly, we see in some of the newer neighborhoods where they've done the landscaping that's built in from day one, I think they're less than five on average. So the newer homes, and so as people change out their landscaping, change out their plum, you know, plum, toilets and sinks and things like that, we start, that's where we think that 6,000 gets comfortable, that that's where most people, single-family homes, can get to that number. It's the outdoor usage is where we're really trying to address.
Yes. So 10, around 10,000. Yes, so around 10,000 accounts will be affected by this change.
And then they can adjust their usage down and they would be right in there.
I'm assuming, you know, West Mesa, we have fairly older infrastructure, older houses, a lot of people don't, are not yet, you know, on the landscaping side, not moving towards that piece yet, just because of costs, you know.
But it's only a half percent, it's only a half percent more.
Yeah.
Instead of being 3%, they're 3.5%. So it's not a dramatic, like, penalty or change, so we give quite a bit of, from 6,000 clear up to, we're, yeah, 14,000, it's either 3 or 3.5%, so it's not a lot. It's when you, we start really ratcheting up when you get above that.
Sure.
But that's the percent of increase in cost, in rate.
Right, right.
What is the difference in rate between tier one and tier two, like what percent?
Well, so we said back, we said the impact per month was $1.20, at 3%.
Yeah, so the impact...
Divide that and figure out what, 0.5%.
Well, if I may, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, if the question is, you know, what's the difference between the price per 1,000 gallons in tier one and tier two?
Yeah, in tier two, I think.
Okay.
That's where it's being affected, right?
Yes, understood. So as proposed, currently, tier one would be at $3.51 per 1,000 gallon, tier two would be $5.30 per gallon.
But remember, there's already that, that's not happening because of this rate increase. There's already that differential, it's already built into the tier.
Sure.
All we're doing is saying, if you stay below 6,000, you're going to get the minimum amount of rate increase, anything in that higher tier, which is already, you know, pretty good number, we're going to keep increasing it a little bit faster rate and just to keep making that difference even broader. So really encourage they get to 6,000.
Yeah, I'm just sensing on, you know, as we look at impacting the tiers, especially tier one and, you know, tier two as you use more, but if we're moving the needle up, right, like it impacts even further people, and so like how do we not, like the changes that we're making to not affect tier one, like the mayor mentioned, how we are not playing with the tiers, then it impacts less people at the end of the day, because we're moving the needle as far as how the basic charges that we're, we are charging residents, right? So, you know, looking at that in the future, I think is important.
And we are, if you look at that, the color chart on the right, we, that's exactly what we're doing, right? We're moving the tiers, we're tightening up the tiers.
Sure.
So that, you know, where you get into the higher rates is at a lower usage than it was historically, but again, we're, we think that that is a relationship to more discretionary water use than, than, than life use, and so that's where we're kind of, when we see most of our residents, or at least half are at the 6,000 or below, we're giving them the lowest rate, and then everybody else, we're just, we're just trying to find ways to encourage that conservation.
For sure.
So I'm just curious, is it, is it really just landscape use, or is it ever impacted by like, say, a family has six kids or something, like if there's a, you know, if there was like a bunch of people, just an example, like a friend of mine?
Well, again, we just do...
I just was wondering what...
We don't know, we're just saying, we're saying half of our accounts, residential accounts.
Yeah.
Are it's 6,000 or below.
I just don't want to impact families of, like, big families if that was something, I just don't know if, I'm just curious if that even is, plays into it.
It's not, these rate increases are not making, it's already built in, right?
Yeah.
Because today, say it again, Eric, today tier one is paying what per month?
Oh, let me get, per what size meter, too?
Yeah. 350 versus 5?
Well, as proposed, but today, in tier one, our residential customers are paying $3.41 for everything that they use, over 3,000 gallons, which is what they get as a part of their service charge, up to 7,000 gallons.
Okay, and then the next tier, what's the difference?
The next tier is another 8,000 gallons, so you'd go up to 15,000 gallons.
But what's the dollar amount?
Oh, dollar amount, I'm sorry, the dollar amount in the second tier currently is $5.12.
So we created these tiers years ago, we already recognize, and we're, we just created these, and I think we're adjusting these tiers based on the historical, we're seeing more of our residents using less water as a general rule, and so we're kind of adjusting these rates to match up where that is. This is not, this is not making or breaking the revenue stream for us, this is just, and again, policy perspective, this is just looking at trying to encourage conservation, right? We'll adjust these rates wherever the tiers fall to meet our needs on the rates, we were just looking for another nudges to encourage people to use less discretionary water, that's what this table is all about.
And it's just the difference, right, so it's not, if they hit 7,000, it's not 7,000 at this higher rate, it would be at 1,000 at the higher, and I hope with the AMI program, people will be able to more closely monitor their water use and maybe, you know, conserve a little bit more with knowledge.
That's, that's true as well. I would say looking at a sample, let's look at a sample case of a household that uses exactly 7,000 gallons right now, if we compress slightly this tier, that from 6 to 7,000, that's what does, the difference they're going to see on their bill, so it's going to be between $1.50 and $2 more by that, by that slight compression, just for that 1,000 gallon ban, so that's the difference between that, in bills, about $1.50 to $2 for a home that uses 7,000 gallons today.
So the last gallons are the most expensive?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's right, you go to the six, you pay everything six and below, you pay one rate, and then if you go over that, and that gives, we think gives people an opportunity to make some...
Some conservation, yeah.
And the thought process behind that is because the median is 6,000 gallons, then that extra thousand, there is some discretionary in there, so maybe you don't overseed your lawn, or maybe you have a, you've been meaning to replace that toilet, that's an old toilet that uses a lot per flush, that could get you there, just small choices.
I think the public would really appreciate us being advocates for conservation and saying, hey, we encourage you, you know, look at your bill, and, you know, you've got, you can save substantially if you just decrease a few, you know, put in artificial turf, or don't do your winter lawn, or, you know, put, put in a couple of new water appliances, and you're going to see big savings, right?
Absolutely.
It's incremental savings, too, it's not dramatic, so. All right, shall we go to wastewater?
Yes, sir.
Let's take it, Mr. Summers, are you okay? Let's move on.
So the other program the Water Resources Department is going to talk to briefly is the wastewater program. And similar, similar numbers that we showed you previously for the water program, however, you know, we don't have the water commodity cost in here, but the big, the big number here is that debt service. And so this is a mix of old and new projects, wastewater plant improvements and expansion, collection pipe replacement, and process improvements at our Northwest Water Reclamation Plant. So that's a debt service, additional debt service that we pay, where we are budgeted to pay more than what we had paid the previous fiscal year as actuals. So to help address these pressures, the department is proposing rates similar to that forecast in the previous rate cycle for this year, so no change than what you saw last year, in that the service and usage charge to our residential customers is proposed at 4.75%, and that would be an impact to our typical residential customer of $1.18 a month for their wastewater. And then the proposal for their commercial customers is at 5% for both the service and usage charge, and the impact to the typical commercial customer would be about $2.48 a month to their wastewater bill. With that, the only other items on Waters list here is the utility service fees, they have not been updated for seven years now, and we have taken a look and updated those either by CPI or time and materials for those materials that are really hard to nail down a price one month to the next. Some of these fees could be utility turn-on callouts, meter installations, and late fees. So those are the fees that we've looked at, at adjusting.
Okay, so that's the water resources, otherwise we'll move to energy, but I'm just, okay, thank you, gentlemen.
And just to kind of set the timing of this, we're doing our due diligence now, we're going to be voting on this, I'm sure that's the last slide.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, so you're, you're going to give notice...
We're going to get some more bites of this apple.
And we're, all we're asking is, and that action is to establish the maximum, you know, but we need to give notice to the community about what the rates are going to be, then we come back in...
November?
November-ish, looking for help?
Yeah.
November, and that'll be the decision. We can always go lower, but we can't go higher than the notice.
And so, and any questions that aren't answered today, we've got another...
Oh, we've got, yeah, we've got 60 days.
60 days to keep talking about it, okay.
Thank goodness.
Welcome.
All right, good morning, Mayor, Council, Scott Boucher, I am the Energy and Sustainability Director here at the City of Mesa, and I have with me John Petrov, who is our Senior Fiscal Analyst, and Tony Kudorn, who's our Energy Resources Program Manager. Again, we're here to talk to you about the proposed rates for both the electric utility and the natural gas utility. So as you've seen from, or heard from, from the water group, there are pressures for both of these utilities, increasing supply cost is one that we're seeing. Also, if you recall, we're using ARPA funds with the electric utility to lessen the, the effects that our customers were seeing on their bill. Those ARPA funds will be running out after next month, so in October, we'll be able to use those ARPA funds, but come November, those, those funds will be fully expended. In addition to that, we are seeing increasing debt service for both of the utilities. Now, we do pursue rate competitiveness, and you'll see with the electric, we're looking at SRP and what their rates are, and with the natural gas utility, we're looking at Southwest Gas and what their rates are. So we're also in the process, as we're looking at AMI, or we're implementing AMI on changing the rate structure a bit, really trying to encourage with the electric side, the, the reduction of peak power usage that happens, and then we're always trying to seek balance between our different customer bases that we have, as you look at the small customer, small residential customer, all the way up to our large commercial customers, we're trying to make sure that we're competitive across all of those classes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Petrov.
So as discussed, we are also seeing increasing costs and pressures on our operating budget in the electric utility, we're seeing higher than normal inflation on commodities or materials and supplies, fuel costs for our fleet, and we're also experiencing rising personal service costs due to competitive pay increases.
From the debt service standpoint, we have three major categories where we're seeing impact to rates, the first being meeting growth demands in downtown Mesa, where we've seen about 2,000 new units, new residential units added since 2012, so there's infrastructure demands to keep up with that growth. We're also participating in multi-department projects like Broadway Road, where there's going to be a lot of undergrounding or relocation or rebuild of facilities. And then the third category is for our reliability and generation projects, such as our microgrid at the PD campus, under 69 KD living project. And when we look at debt service over the years, we do see a little hump in the debt service repayment this fiscal year, that's a, a large principal payment for the 2020 debt issuance, so we're going to see a drop in debt, debt service going into next year, but going forward, we are seeing increasing pressure on, on debt services as we take on those projects that I mentioned before.
And as I discussed previously, this is just a graphical representation of our increasing operating costs you're seeing over time. As Scott mentioned, we, we do compare our monthly bills with surrounding utilities. On the electric side, we compare with SRP. This, this chart shows our current rates, in blue, the proposed increase to those bills in the white and blue cross on top of the blue, and then the yellow columns are SRP monthly bills. In all three cases, with current rates, or if we do go forward with our proposed rates, we are above SRP, and that is due to the ARPA funding being expended. What we're proposing on the electric side is a $2...
We're subsidizing it with the ARPA funds right now, so...
When the ARPA funds are gone, the, the different, the margin between us and SRP will be even higher.
Yeah, so the, the margin has existed, it's just what will the customer see on their bill, and it's been covered, some of that's been covered with the ARPA funds that we've had, yes.
Thank you.
Now, with the, the debt and operating pressures we discussed, we are proposing rate increases for electric. On the residential side, we're proposing a $2.25 increase to the system service charge, a 4.25% summer tier two increase, and a winter tier one increase of 4%, and a winter tier two increase of 39%. That sounds high, but it's, it's what we mentioned about, going to a more modern rate structure, whereas the more you use, currently, they pay less for more, for the more electricity you use, so we're trying to, to go to an inclining usage rate, and that's the first step in that. So, sorry, so for the average residential customer with these proposed rates, we would see a 2.1% increase on their monthly bill, or $2.83. Like residential, we compare our commercial electric bills to SRP. In all three cases, as we mentioned, due to the ARPA funding being expended, we are seeing our current and proposed bills being higher for small, average, and large commercial customer. With that, we are proposing increases to our commercial electric rates, the system service charge, we're proposing a 5% increase to that, and a 6% increase to summer tier two, and a 1% increase to winter tier two. So the effective increase for an average usage customer would be 0.9% or $5 a month.
So with the gas utility, we thought we would just remind Council that the service territories that we have with the City of Mesa, so there's the City of Mesa service territory, which covers most of Mesa with the exception of some of southeast Mesa and what we call the keyhole that kind of runs through, but then in addition to that, we have a large service area down in the Magma area, which is the Queen Creek Santan Valley area.
So like electric, gas has also experienced increasing costs in their operating budget due to inflation on materials and supplies, fuel costs, we're also seeing personnel service increases due to competitive pay increases, but we've also increased our staff over the past few years for the growth we're seeing in the Magma service area.
From a debt service standpoint, the, the growth in Magma is driving a lot of that debt service, we're adding over 2,000 customers a year in Magma, and we recently exceeded 30,000 customers in Magma, so a lot of growth we're seeing down there. And so we are completing master plan, high, high-pressure projects down there, such as our New Gate Station and the Gansel Road Project, which is coming up in a few years. We're also going through with other departments, replacing old natural gas infrastructure in the quarter sections, and then the AMI projects as well.
Just for you, Frasian Councilman, you may, someone could help me out, we do have a separate rate for the Magma area that's different than the City of Mesa rate, is that correct?
And that helps to try to recognize that significant growth factor we're experiencing down there.
From a debt service standpoint, we see a curve upwards and then falling back down, that's due to a expedited repayment schedule for taxable financing for our New Gate Station, but even following the '28, '29 fiscal year, we are expecting upward pressure due to debt service.
And then another graphical representation of the... And then another graphical representation of those operating cost increases we're seeing over time. On the residential side, our comparisons to Southwest Gas are looking favorable currently and with the proposed rates on all three customer usage categories. Well, sorry. Small customers are a little bit higher. That's due to our system service charge initially being higher, but as customers use more gas, our comparisons are more favorable. So for residential gas customers, we're proposing a 75 cent increase to the system service charge for summer and winter, a 5% increase in winter and summer Tier 1, 11% increase in summer Tier 2, and a 7% increase in winter Tier 2. Now, that's also to get to our inclining rate structure, as the more you use, the more the rate is. So for the average residential customer, these changes will be a 3.6% increase to their monthly bills or $1.64. Like residential, our commercial gas customers, in all usage categories, compare favorably to Southwest Gas for current and proposed rates. And we are proposing for commercial customers, a $2 increase to the system service charge, a 2% increase in summer and winter Tier 1 usage rate, and a 4% increase to the summer and winter Tier 2 rate. So for an average commercial customer, that would result in $7.42 more per month.
And then a few other changes that we're looking to implement. As our friends in water mentioned, we haven't updated our utility service fees for about seven years now. So those will be adjusted for CPI and other time and material cost adjustments. We'll be revising our electric rules and regulations. Those also haven't been touched for quite a while, since 2009, actually. A lot of those policies are very outdated, so we'll be updating that document. And then for our renewable energy program, which is optional for customers, where we purchase renewable energy on their behalf, we previously limited the enrollment period to just allowing customers to sign up between April and June. We're now opening that up to all year round, so that if anybody wants us to purchase renewable energy on their behalf, we'll do that for them.
All right. Maybe before we move on, I know we've got some questions. Yeah, Ms. Philsbury.
So on this and then the electricity, there's just a slide that says you're going to adjust the utility service fees. So like, will we find out what those are, or like, is there a reason why they're not included in the slides, or what the actual adjustment of those fees are?
Mayor, Council. So there are a lot of fees in that book, so there's like a fee for.
So it's just a lot.
There's a lot. Yeah.
So nothing like major or something, just a slight increase?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Philsbury, I don't think we're not touching the security deposit, but it's more like if there's damaged meters, those rates haven't been updated a long time. If there's, you know, work that has to be done to bring a service line to the main, we're changing that to time and material, because depending on which side of the street that's on, there could be, you know, vast cost differences.
So there's just lots of scenarios and a lot of information that wouldn't have made sense to put on a slide for us.
It's cost recovery or adjusted by CPI.
Okay.
So that's what we're just saying. Whatever it was seven years ago, we're going to adjust it by the CPI, or what the actual cost of the time. Because, you know, since then, employees are being paid more commodity, or equipment, or I guess commodity costs could be higher. So we're just going to, we're only going to adjust it to those points. It's not like the rates where we're doing these other percentages. It's just what, we're trying to recover our cost to provide those services.
And why haven't we touched it in seven years? Is that just a lot of work?
Yeah, it's a big schedule.
Yeah, and they're usually just kind of one-time fees.
Okay.
So.
Not everybody's ever going to use them.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. That helps things.
One last question on electricity and our audit and finance. I talked about smart thermostat programming as ARPA funding is extinguished. And then can we help the consumer reduce their bills by having smart thermostats tied into our grid, as you know? And then if you have to adjust it, I mean, we're not worried about peak use of electricity right now, but in the future, if we get more online, we can pull down electricity by using those smart thermostats. So something to consider in part of your programming, I guess. Use the word.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. So we launched our Smart Peaks, Smart Thermostat Program in July of this year, and had customers enroll in that. And we did launch two events in August, where we were able to call on their thermostats to conserve during peak event times. We learned a lot. I think it went well, but, you know, after each event, we got great feedback from customers. We implemented those changes to improve on their messaging, and we look forward to growing that program. Councilmember Duff was nice enough to offer a push, advertising push, to try and get more customers enrolled in that program. I think we'll be looking at it for ways to increase enrollment. The vendor has offered to help us with that. And I think as we roll into spring, we will be evaluating, should we incent customers with a discount off the purchase of the thermostat, is that going to help us increase enrollment? So we'll be looking at those various options. But yeah, that program is launched, and we're happy with the results so far.
Thank you.
I have the program, and I've experienced the times that I needed to turn. And I got a text notice. I had, they anticipated on certain days because of extreme heat, that today we expect. And then I got text notifications that at this time period, we will be touching your thermostat. Of course, you can override it. And then, you know, another one saying it's concluded. So it was, it was a good experience.
Great. Glad to hear that.
I encourage people to sign up and get their Google Nest, and is what I have, but are there other ones? I don't know.
Yeah, there's. Councilmember Duff, yes. Honeywell is a current other technology that we're.
Yeah, so those are the ones that'll integrate online.
I'd just add, if we have new customers, you pass that on to them when they sign up and say, hey, this option's available. I would almost have them sign up and participate in the program.
I have a question about the electric company. I mean, going back, you know, to 1945, when the city council said we're going to abolish the property tax and buy all the utility companies, and we're going to operate on this model of we're going to make a modest return on our utility services, rather than, because someone's going to make a modest profit on the utility services, it might as well be us, and that will allow us to abolish the property tax. So that's the model that we have followed and continue to follow. But when you look at the electric company, the first slide that we looked at today showed that, you know, there's parentheses around the electric fund balance in, you know, in perpetuity. It looks like we're going to continue to, at least for the forecasting we're doing right now, effectively spend more than we put in to that. And our rates are not competitive, but they're competitive, but they're higher.
Five percent.
They're slightly higher than SRP. So the rationale, you know, it just, I'm concerned. I mean, it's not, I think, is there any reason for optimism that at some point, we're going to make money and we can be competitive rate-wise with the electric company? Or are we just kind of stuck? Because this is an old infrastructure electric company, and Salt River Project or someone else is not interested in buying this off of us and coming in and providing maybe a more efficient, cost-effective electric company?
Right. And that was the last conversation we had with that, sir. When they looked at our system, you know, we were doing a good job of bringing it up to speed and modernizing it, but that was their biggest concern, is the cost to, you know, improve, modernize the system. And frankly, downtown, we still struggle with that, being able to provide the level of service that, for these big businesses, especially as we go through these conversions from, you know, retail to residential. I mean, these are different loads, and they're at the expense of that infrastructure significantly.
Scott, any thoughts? Yeah, especially, I mean, some of them, like Eco Mesa, it's going from a parking lot to a high-rise residential with commercial on the first floor. That's obviously a different load from a parking lot, right? I think, though, if you look back historically, that the utility's done very well historically, and this is a snapshot in time of where we're at right now. Tony Kadoran and his group are working very hard on trying to make sure that we've got self-generation that's happening, that we're able to project out these costs. Because for many years, we were less than SRP, and we were doing well on the market. As the market changed, that has changed in what our rates, our rates are reflecting those changes. So now what we're looking at now is more certainty going forward with that electric utility. And so I'm confident that we can remain competitive with SRP. And, you know, there's also some parts of it where us having the electric utility, us being our largest customer of the electric utility, and then being able to work with developers in downtown, I think there's an advantage to that, too.
We think we can be a lot more creative as far as addressing electrical needs in the downtown area than some of the larger electric providers, because they have to have a formula and a template that says this is how it's going to get done. So yeah, but it's a subsidized operation right now, and will be for the foreseeable future.
I guess I'd just love to have a plan for how we're going to get out of this situation. And I think this electric, I mean, the electric grid generally is in trouble, right? I was in on some, sat in on an electric vehicle working group meeting at the national level a few days ago, and the big concern is our, with the tremendous uptick in demand for electricity services that we're seeing in our downtown, and as it's going through the Renaissance, but also electric vehicles, you know, are going to put a demand on the electric grid, and we're going to have to spend a lot of money in our electric company to increase our capacity, assuming we can even buy electricity, you know, in the volumes that we're going to need it. So it's just, this seems like a very ambiguous time for electric companies generally, but particularly for our little electric company.
And I think that's the challenge is scale, right? As a scale for five square miles or whatever we are, to go compete and own power stations and, you know, we just, we can't go buy a share of Palaverdy, you know, to provide, you know, cheap electric power. We're on the markets trying to do it, but we're not, our scale doesn't allow us to do that. And I think that's our competitive disadvantage, but I would say, nothing against other providers, but I think our level of service and response to our customers is unlike any other utility. And so I think, you know, there's that kind of trade-off. We're small, but we think we're pretty good at what we do, and it gives us a lot of flexibility with the core of the city. But it's, you know, utilities are very expensive, and certainly now commodity of providing sources of power and being able to scale that is a big challenge for us. Compare relative to others, I guess.
And I know others want to speak. I'll just end what I'm saying by, I would love to see us launch a mission to how do we return to profitability for our electric company? What kind of innovative things do we need to do? Electric generation, is that part of it? I suspect it is, but are there other things that we need to do to become a profitable enterprise? Ms. Duff?
Electric power on any provider right now is a challenge. Finding the supply and then the costs, and then the infrastructure, especially going into renewables and making those changes. So I don't think we're experiencing that much different than, I know, talking to SRP, there's a lot of challenges they have with controlling the costs and their infrastructure and their growth, and especially in the commercial valleywide, right? We have huge industrial users who need a lot of energy as well as the electrification. But the thing I do like about having our own electric company in the center of downtown is that right now, there's a lot of infrastructure costs. I agree. All the growth has to be supported. We haven't done any major upgrades in this area in many decades. But we can respond to the growth. We can know what those new companies, new businesses, and new residential that are coming in and respond, be more nimble and react to supporting that growth. I'm afraid if we go into a larger system, they'll say, yeah, we're going to get to that in '28, and just hold on. I think we're able to plan and be more nimble and react quicker than a large institution covering it when the growth is so phenomenal in such a dense area. And then because of this area densifying very quickly with residential and businesses and such, I'm hoping that additional users in that five-and-a-half square miles will, over time, catch up with itself. And then being able to integrate our solar, I think, is going to help, too, doing our own options and, you know, some gas backups and be more resilient. But kind of a control of our own destiny in an area that is promising is kind of my response to it. And yeah, I agree, we have our challenges, the infrastructure costs, our growth citywide, and we certainly can see it here in downtown. Thank you.
Before we move on, I just, as far as housekeeping goes, I have a hard stop at 9:30, and so I'm going to hand the gavel to the Vice Mayor at that point. So that's why I'm being inconsiderate in not calling a recess. So Council, if you need to take a quick body break, or, you know, I think we're just going to have a rolling, we've got a lot, you know, after this, we got drive-throughs, so we're not going to take a break, we're just going to plow through. That's all right.
All right. You want to move on to solid waste?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Sherry Collins. I'm the Solid Waste Director, and I have Justin Stat with me. He's our Senior Fiscal Analyst. We are here today to present our recommendations for next year's rates. So first, we want to get into what our increasing cost pressures are on the utilities. Before we do that, I just want to mention in the previous slide in the budget overview, the capital for solid waste, and we talked about the trucks that we'd ordered. Just to give you an idea of that, we have, that is 13 trucks in there. So we have a significant amount of trucks, when in past years, we would see something like four. But just to try to stay on top of that long lead time, that large number equates to 13 trucks. Okay, so moving on to the normal cost pressures we've been seeing every year, we have three major categories in solid waste. That's people, disposal fees, and trucks. And so you'll see that the cost for our people are increasing. We've had market adjustment increases, we've had step pay increases, and we've added some needed positions. Our disposal fees are increased based upon the CPI index for the western region, all goods. And then we've seen our fleet cost increase as well. As we see inflation costs in labor and materials, parts, that's what that's for. And then, again, our aging fleet, they're requiring more repairs. Okay? And now, the next chart just depicts those cost pressures, cost pressures, but in a chart form. The solid line are actuals, and then the dotted line are what our forecast is. And now we're going to get into our rate recommendations. So the first rate recommendation that we're going to talk about is our residential rate recommendation. We're recommending a 3% increase. And so for the average customer, they will see a 92 cent increase monthly on their bill. And then for comparison reasons, we did just put a chart up there to show what some of the surrounding cities are currently at. The next rate recommendation that we're going to talk about is in our commercial side. Before I get started, I just want to remind you that we do compete with the privates on a business level for these services. We have a couple different ways that we request these rate increases. The overall revenue increase to this is 7.5%, but we get there a few different ways because we have a bunch of different customer bases, and we want to make sure that we even those out. So the first recommendation is to increase our base rate that we charge by 5%. Our average customer has a six-yard bin, and so just to put that in perspective, it's around a $5.56 increase per month. We also have zones that we have each day that are routed efficiently, but sometimes our customers require services multiple days, and they're out of those zones, so we just require a fee for that. And so we're just recommending to increase that this year as well. And then historically, we've been offering a multi-day discount if you have multiple days of service. We did some, we did analyze that this year, and it's really not a discounted service. It costs the same to service it the second day as it does the first day. So we're looking to phase that out. So the first part of that this year is to decrease that discount from a 15% discount to a 10% discount. Now, the next two categories of customers is a small customer base, but they're important. We need to keep up on these as well. These customers are based on material, it's heavy material, and so we just, we have not increased these in two years, so we just need to increase the customer base for the heavy bins and then the compacters, just to keep up with the CPI of the cost of the landfill fees. And then moving on to our next portion of our commercial business is our front lawn cardboard. So just like the multi- So just like the multi-day, you know, we're analyzing this and whenever we originally set the card, front-load cardboard program up years ago, it was a discounted rate. Recycling markets have changed, it's not a discounted rate anymore. So what we're doing is just recommending to increase this to a level that will continue, that will allow us to continue to sustain this program. So now we'll move on to the commercial, the next portion of our commercial business, which is our roll-offs. Again, keeping in mind that we also compete with the privates for these services. These are those large containers you'll see outside of people's homes when they do a remodel, maybe once, maybe twice, they won't use them that often. We also have permanent customers that will have these serviced sometimes daily, some businesses. So again, just keeping up with the CPI increase, we're recommending to increase the rate that we charge for the material in these containers, both on the trash side and the green waste side. The green waste side, you'll notice, is a little bit higher than the trash side. The green waste requires processing. The trash is dumped, but the green waste requires them to dump them and then process it, so it is a higher fee because it is a recycling-type service. And then the fee that we charge to set them, to set these containers and deliver them to a residence, we're just requesting to increase that by $10.50. And on the next page, what we did is we just did a summary to show you what that would mean to the one-time customers who use it. And if it's a trash customer, most of our customers will get a 30-yard, and that will increase $25.54 for the one or two times they might use it. And then for a green waste customer, it would increase it by $28.13. And that is my presentation. Any questions?
Wow, thank you. All right, but before we let you go, counsel, questions on solid waste?
I'll go first.
Yes.
I'll be real quick. I don't know if I can talk as fast as her, but I'm going to really try. So, for commercial recycling, do we have any options there? I hear complaints like for apartments and such that we only have cardboard. See, I'm talking faster.
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we do have a front-load cardboard program. We currently do not have a front-load commingled program. We continually look at options to offer things like that. Again, once our facility comes back online, which we're hoping that facility will come back online in the next month, we will be looking at other options that we could perhaps offer. Just depends on what the rates are, what we can charge for them. Again, whenever we created some of these in the past, they were discounted rates, so we do need to take a look at it and see what it will charge to sustain those programs, not at a discounted rate, but the actual cost.
Thank you. I'd love to have a deeper dive later, talking about recycling. And I know that's all tied to the...
Yeah, we can just separate them, the rate discussion.
So, yeah, not in the context of rates, but just later.
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll wrap it up.
So Mayor, Counsel, you have to wrap it all up. So the next slide shows the, a summary of the rate recommendation of, so compiled it to the net sources and uses, fund balance. So the first, just to remind Counsel, for the first column for fiscal year 2223 estimate, those are the rate adjustments in gray that were already adopted by counsel. So those were the ones that were adopted by counsel last year. So when we came to counsel during the budget season in April, the middle column there, fiscal year 2324 budget, those were the rate recommendation that we had in the forecast presented to counsel. So the three and a half, for instance, for water residential, five and a half for water commercial. Now, the ones on the far right column, the fiscal year 2324 proposed, those are the ones that we've been talking about and those are the rate recommendations for counsel to take action on if moving forward. So to show kind of, we have been able to reduce some of those adjustments a little lower. For instance, if you look at the water, we, in the budget time, we had three and a half, we were able to go down to three. For commercial, we went from five and a half to five. And so some of those, we were able to reduce the rate recommendation that we have. So this kind of gives you just a summary of the rate recommendations and we're still able to stay, maintain about that 19% that we showed in the budget season with those reduced rate recommendations. So the next one is just a summary table of the non-residential water usage rate proposals. These have been talked about in the, with the departments themselves, but just wanted to kind of give you a summary table of that. So the next steps for counsel, so on, in Monday, on Monday's agenda, as you saw, is a notice of intent for counsel to take action. So what the notice of intent does, just to remind counsel and the viewers, is that it is, it sets the maximum adjustment amount, so these rate recommendations would be included in there. So those rate recommendations would be the maximum amount. If counsel, in the meantime, would like to go higher on any of those, what that would do is reset the notice of intent. We would have to go back and re-notice and it would set the 60 days. So the notice of intent sets the 60-day time period between when we notice the residents and the customers of that there will be a rate adjustment to when counsel can take action on those rate adjustments. So that's 60 days. And so if the counsel can always recommend to go lower on any of them in that same 60 days is fine. However, if the counsel requests to go higher, we would have to reset that 60 days. So the next time we would come back would be November 20th to introduce those, the rate ordinances. And then on December 4th would, counsel, is when they would take action on utility rates.
Great. Ms. Spillsberry?
So back on the fund forecast, the slide on 50. So those rate increases are really only taking us from the 18.7 to 18.9. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct, counsel, or Mayor, Councilmember Spillsberry. That is correct. For when we, so when we came to budget during the budget season, we did a forecast and we presented the forecast, I believe it was in the end of March, beginning of April. The recommended forecasted rate adjustments was the middle column in the three and a half. So what we were able to do is going through the budget process and going through the forecast and finalizing some of the contracts and things like that, we were able to reduce some of those rate adjustments slightly and still maintain that 18.9.
Yeah, that was our goal. To get back to the same place.
And so, is the thought behind that, that this is super conservative and so we would probably be around 20, which, because what we're shooting for instead of making the rates be to where it would be 20% is what I'm trying to get to.
Oh, sure, yeah, we, yeah.
Since we try, since that's one of our principles, is 20%.
Right, but our historical performance is, that's why we showed you that slide before. We think during a year, again, if we're very conservative, assuming every position is filled, every project happens during that period of time, that's what we put in the forecast. Realistically, that won't happen. So the fact that within 1.1% of that 20% goal, we feel pretty comfortable about that.
Because, I mean, if those kind of, anyways, it looks like there would have to be quite a bit more of a rate increase to hit the 20% if we were trying to...
What did you say, Chris? Yeah, go ahead, Brian. The number was...
Oh, it's about six or seven million either in increased revenues or decreased expenses.
We figure over a period of time, we can make that up.
Because there's ways to do it other than just through the rate increases.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Right.
Manage expenditure projects and...
Okay, all right, thank you.
My experience over, having done this a few years, is that these guys are great at being very conservative. And so the reality is always, it'll come back with a higher...
Yeah, that's why we don't want to try to solve this with rate increases. We think there are other levers we have.
Yeah.
So with that, the last thing would be when, if counsel takes action and approves the rate adjustments on December 4th, those rate adjustments would go into effect February 1st. So the customers would see it in their March bill for February usage. And that is the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. We look forward to the next 60 days and probably invite a public discussion on this and I'm sure we'll have some interesting council meetings on it. Thank you. Moving forward then, item 2B is a presentation and to provide direction on proposed changes to the Mesa zoning ordinance regarding drive-through facilities. Mary and Rachel, thank you for, you don't need to show us where all the arrow marks are for what you've gone through on this project, but thank you for your work on it.
Absolutely. I love that you think this is the fun part.
We've been looking forward to this, right?
Good morning, Counsel. Mayor Duff, Counsel. Today, we have a presentation on the drive-through tax amendments. What we're looking to do is to present what we've done over the last two years as it relates to the outreach and the research that we've done to get to the recommended tax amendment. That's, that will be before the City Council on October 2nd. Obviously, with me today is Rachel, our Assistant Planning Director. I'll go through an introduction and then Rachel will talk through some of the technical...
So Mary, Rachel, can I propose something?
Mm-hmm.
If you'll go back, I don't want to spend a lot of time going, if we had time, this would be the right thing to do, spend time going back, let's jump to the fact that we took, we came to counsel on a certain date, I can't remember the date, you probably have it, presented to you or modified, a reset on the drive-through ordinance. We got direction from counsel, take that idea. We showed you the graphs, we showed you how Mesa's more lenient, we have more drive-throughs than any other city in the Valley, yet we adopted, we proposed to adopt ideas that were already, have been implemented by other communities. That's what we took, the PNZ, was similar to what we talked to you about. We went to PNZ, obviously, you see the Nile, but I want to start from that point and go forward. Because this is on for introduction, so we're not, nobody's making hard and fast decisions, but the question is, we just want to clarify where the staff is and our position about what we're recommending to counsel on the drive-through ordinance. That is, despite the denial from PNZ, we want to get direction from counsel if you're interested in continuing down the path that we talked about the last time we were here for study session. How's that?
Thank you, Mr. Mirdia. And also, I think staff has modified things since the rejection by PNZ.
We've heard some, we heard some comments and that's where I want to start from. Is that okay?
Okay, that's great. Thank you, City Manager Brady. So Mayor Giles, Counsel, in front of you is a slide that summarizes basically the amendments that staff was proposing for the drive-throughs. That was to modify the process for some of the zoning districts to better align with those jurisdictions to require council use permits in some of those districts, to create some additional definitions, and then to modify the development and the design standards. Again, there's no ban or limitations on the number or the concentration of drive-throughs that was removed. At the Planning and Zoning Board public hearing, we heard four different concerns. We've talked to some of the board members just to verify this, we went back through the transcript to try to summarize and synthesize what the major concerns were for you based on what we had heard. So the first was that the proposed updates to chapters six and seven that would require a council use permit in the neighborhood commercial, the PEP, LIGI, and HI zoning districts could have impacts and could be onerous on the development community. The second area that they had concerns with were the proposed sections for the onsite circulation and stacking study. They had concerns that if we had minimum standards, why would we still require this study? The third is that there was, we had proposed a 100-foot separation from residential properties to mitigate some of the potential noise and potential traffic issues that could impact surrounding residential uses. And then the fourth was as it related to the legal waiver and how that, those would be processed. So what I'll do is I'll have Rachel go through and we'll quickly go through what hasn't changed. And then there are two that we're recommending changes for that City Council could consider, and that is two, the onsite circulation and stacking study, and three, the 100-foot separation for the residential properties.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. So we're going to go through these kind of by topic. The first one has to do with the required process for drive-throughs and what zoning districts they would be allowed in. So with this proposed amendment, we're recommending that a council use permit be required in the neighborhood commercial, which currently requires a special use permit. In the planned employment park, the light industrial district, general industrial and heavy industrial district, which also currently requires a special use permit. What we saw was that this is really more in line with other jurisdictions and where we see where drive-throughs are permitted. Lots of jurisdictions either do not allow them in their industrial districts or they require a conditional use permit of some sort for those. This also better aligns with the intent of those districts, which is for employment-generating uses. And also with our general plan, most of these districts are located within the employment character area, and the intent to that is really for high-quality generating employment uses. So while we see that there is some benefit to have this as a supportive use in some of those areas, so for employees that want to go grab lunch and things, we do think that it is appropriate to have an additional layer of consideration here to make sure that they are located in appropriate places and that we are retaining our employment areas. So this gives counsel the discretion to really look at those impacts and ensure that it is appropriate for the location. So the next set that Mary mentioned was, we're proposing to create a couple of new definitions. So currently, drive-throughs cover any sort of operational facility, but we do see there is a difference between pickup windows and what we see of ATMs or teller windows. They just have different operational characteristics and different impacts. And so we are proposing to create separate definitions for these, and that would allow us to address them differently within the zoning ordinance as far as where they are required. So with the proposed amendments that I mentioned earlier, those were specific to drive-throughs, those changes to require the council use permit, those wouldn't apply to pickup window facilities or to drive-up ATMs or teller window facilities. And this also allows us to address them differently within the development standards as well. Within our development standard section, I'm going to go through a couple of different topics here. So the first one has to do with our vehicular stacking and circulation. So currently, within our zoning ordinance, we have regulations in place for the distance of how long a drive-through lane needs to be between the pickup window and an order menu box and the speaker box. We are, we are suggesting that we include an additional distance between the drive-through lane entry and the street access or access to a cross-access drive aisle within the development itself. This was at the suggestion of our Planning and Zoning Board at earlier, earlier study sessions, and it really has to do with the impact and the overflow that we see generated by some of these facilities where they really require longer queuing lines and we see that they end up overflowing onto our streets, causing issues, or within centers themselves, they are overflowing into, into the travel lanes. And you'll see that there's kind of been this ad hoc trying to mitigate those where people put out different cones and are trying to direct traffic. So this is to help address some of those concerns. The other new requirements has to do with the creation of those definitions. So these would be specific stacking requirements for pickup windows and for ATM and teller windows, since they are slightly different from a drive-through facility. So creating unique stacking distances for those. With this, we are recommending that these stacking distance could be modified through the site plan review process if through the onsite circulation and stacking study, an applicant was able to demonstrate that their proposal would be able to satisfy the operational requirements of that facility. So as just mentioned, the onsite circulation and stacking study, this is, this is a new requirement that we are proposing. This is a description of the onsite circulation. It includes a description of their operations, so covering such things as their hours of operations, the method by which the orders are placed, the peak demand hours, the time it takes to serve customers, and a description of how noise and sound is mitigated. This also describes the onsite traffic activity, so what the arrival rates are, what the anticipated stacking requirement would be. It would require an onsite circulation plan showing all the points of access and how vehicles, the pattern of circulation onsite would be. And also a mitigation plan showing that the stacking will not block the internal driveways or back up onto streets and explanation of how that might be mitigated if they run into some sort of operational situations where it involves that.
Rachel, does any other city do this, require this?
Other cities require different versions of traffic studies. So some require traffic impact studies, some require a traffic analysis. Those are more intense traffic studies than what we're proposing here.
So we're not asking for more than anybody else has?
No.
Okay, so to be clear, because sometimes I hear that accusations that we're going overboard, Mesa's trying to do something different. The reality is, we've been the most... The reality is, we've been the most lenient and allowed more drive-throughs in the city, but I also want to make sure going forward, we made the commitment to the council, we would try to adopt what other communities have adopted around us. And so, as you hear this called "new requirement," it's really in a realignment with the other communities also.
Yes. And Mayor and Council, in earlier versions, we had suggested a traffic impact study aligned with other communities, and based on input and feedback from stakeholders. We believe we can address some of these concerns through a lesser intense study.
So, we've backed off of that a little bit.
Okay. So, this isn't a traffic study?
Less.
All right. All right. Yes. So, at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, there was some concern expressed about this, this study, as Mary had mentioned, and, you know, concerned that it was an onerous requirement, that if we have base standards, why would we require this additional study? As staff, we explained that a couple reasons. One, a base standard kind of gives us that, you know, a base of what to go off to, but we know that a lot of operators require more stacking, and so, this would be the opportunity to be able to address those circumstances, where if they provide us a study and they, they're aware that they have queuing needs that exceed our base standards, that we could address that through the site plan review process. And it also gave us a way to modify those standards if other facilities didn't think that they needed as much stacking. But based on Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation, we are recommending that this, this study only be required now when a deviation is requested from those minimum standards.
Mr. Meridia?
Yeah. Rachel, how many would, how many drive-throughs would be affected by requiring this? These mostly, like folks, you see more and more, like two, two drive-through options now?
Like double?
Double the lines, right? Double the, where they can order. Is that particularly the ones that we're looking at, or like, what's an example? Is everybody going to be required a stacking study to be attached to there?
Isn't it more the difference between a Chick-fil-A and a Arby's? Arby's or something like that?
Yeah. McDonald's has to.
No, I'm just saying the difference is, you're going to look at the intensity. If it's a Chick-fil-A, McDonald's versus Arby's, or something that doesn't have, you don't see that intensity, is that fair?
Vice Mayor Heredia, so originally, we had proposed that this be required for any drive-through facility, because that would allow us to identify those more intense uses where our minimum standard might not be enough to address some of those external impacts. So, getting back to some of those facilities that generate a lot of traffic and a lot of stacking. But where we are moving now, based off of the conversation with Planning and Zoning, is just to require that study if a deviation is being requested.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor Heredia, if I can, one of the reasons we were originally requiring it for all, for all new drive-throughs is to look at the cumulative impacts. So, if, within 1,200 feet of a site, there are other drive-throughs, they'd have to look at what those cumulative impacts would be. This would now only capture those that are deviating from our standards, to have to look at those cumulative impacts.
Again, consistent with other communities.
The cumulative impacts? Yes. Because if you're doing a traffic impact study, you would be looking at those.
Look at everything. Yep.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Summers.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I found the mute button on my phone, which is excellent, so I'm able to speak on this. I had no questions on the previous, previous discussion. For this one, I think Mary said a very interesting point here, is that by not requiring this equally across all of the drive-through restaurants, that we could end up with the same problem we have now, which is stacking that bleeds into parking lots and then out into our streets. We're not asking for a traffic study. That would be fairly onerous. All we're asking for is, is tracking. These drive-through restaurants are very, very well-funded, national brands, with significant amounts of money. What we are simply asking to do is that they do a study to ensure that the operation of the restaurant isn't going to negatively impact the community around it. So, I don't think it would be onerous to have our ordinance require a study for all of the drive-through restaurants to, to complete this, just to make sure that our traffic flows are not negatively impacted.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
And I, I, I'm a little concerned about that gap, right, between, for cumulative impact, that you won't catch, right, without the study.
So, may your council member go forth? What we were trying to do is, we're trying to balance kind of what we heard at the public hearing and some of those concerns, with trying to capture as much as we can of those potential impacts. So, this is one option that, that staff is providing to the council for consideration.
And absolutely, it is a balance, and it's something that, that's a difficult balance to get to, but I think this isn't, from what I hear from our constituents, this is one of those impact areas that they're very concerned with. So, you hate to just, you know, minimize that, or, or not address it by moving that far over. That, that, those are my thoughts on that.
Yeah, we can take that, we can adopt that. I mean, we're, we're trying to thread the needle here and trying to make this work for everybody, so.
Mayor, I, if I may, I support what Councilmember Go-Forth is suggesting, and I'm suggesting is, we're, we're not requiring a traffic study. We, like other cities do, we're just requiring stacking. I think that is a point of public safety, particularly to ensure that the cumulative effects don't bleed out back into the road. I don't think it's overly onerous. It would be my preference that we just require, require that across the board, which would be fair and equal to all the potential facilities.
Thank you, Ms.
I wasn't going to say anything till the end, but if we're talking about this and we're taking it as council suggestion, then I'm going to voice my opinion on this particular part, that in planning zoning, which I watched twice, I think one of the points made is that these companies do their own studies, because they also care about the safety of their customers, just as much as the city cares about the safety of their customers. And so, there's already a lot of money spent on these kind of studies by each of these companies before they even do the site plan. And it, it's only if they're deviating from the minimum development standards. So, one of the points Planning and Zoning Board made was, like, Chick-fil-A's come through the city with the current ordinance, and they do everything in their power to make sure that they have enough room on their site plan, and adding the extra safety measures and extra lanes currently now, with new ones going forward, because that's important to them as well. So, I'm just going to throw that out there.
Before we move on, I am going to turn the meeting over to the Vice Mayor, so I can go to my next commitment, but I, I will, just before I leave, say that I don't find the onsite circulation stacking study to be an onerous requirement, and I think that's the, the two concerns that I think we, I hear reflected from the community are traffic congestion and noise. And so, I, I've talked with staff yesterday about the proposed modifications to address the concerns of the Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you to the Planning and Zoning Board for their very good critique of this. I think it's, it's, this has benefited from a lot of public meetings, a lot of critique, but I do support the staff's proposed modifications post-planning and zoning. Having said that...
And Mayor, we're going to be putting this, are you okay with putting this, moving this forward for introduction? That's kind of the question in front of us today, too.
Yes. If it comes to a vote, I am in favor of allowing this to move forward and for a formal vote.
Okay.
And having said that, I will apologize for my need to, to leave and turn the meeting over to the Vice Mayor. Thank you.
I, can I go back?
Vice Mayor?
If, if I understood correctly what you're saying, Councilmember Spillsbury, I think you just made the case for us, right? They've, they've already done the study. So, it's not that much more to ask them to share it with us, to show that it's not going to be, it's...
Well, I think that, see, I think, that's what they say, and I don't know, you know, when we see them, I'm not sure. See, I think part of the problem is, they'll say, well, we did it for our site, and we're, or for our particular restaurant. We're saying, no, we need to see it how everything is involved, because sometimes these happen in phases, and so, it's the context of, you know, yes, I, one, I drive-through, have looked at this and I can handle it, but, you know, we've seen that then other developments take place, an additional drive-through, some kind of business, and now you've got cars meandering through parking lots, and people can't get to the other businesses, people trying to get to, you know, can't turn into off the road. So, I think this is all we're trying to do, is say, give us something that we create the standard for, for the review. And again, it's not unlike what they're being required to do in any other community. I think that's my emphasis here, is that there's a tendency, and there's a frustration on my level, that the development community wants a lower standard in Mesa. They want to take what they have to do somewhere else, and they want to do less. And we're just trying to get back to where everybody else is in these reviews, to make sure that we can accommodate their intensity of use and allow for the flow of traffic throughout. So, that's, I mean, that's my position from the beginning, is we just want to be back where everybody else is, and try to make it clear and work for everybody else, because the arguments about it being too onerous, for some reason, it's okay to do it in Gilbert and Chandler, but not in Mesa. And that's what, that's the frustrating part. I think we had Councilmember Summers and Councilmember Duff.
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I think Mr. Brady captured much of my argument very well in his, in his statement. I would just add that, one, if they're doing these studies already, we do need to see them. Two, clearly, either some are not doing them, or they're very myopic in their particular site. The evidence is the countless number of drive-throughs whose traffic is bleeding either into the parking spaces, or filling the parking areas in, in certain developments, or worse, bleeding out onto the street. So, this being, I think, a stacking study that considers the cumulative effects of the various restaurants to ensure the public safety is, is a key concern that we should have, and we should be including that in this ordinance. And again, Mr. Brady said it, this isn't anything that other communities around us aren't already requesting, and that these franchises aren't doing for those communities already. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
I just want to clarify, because I'm getting a little confused, if we're debating this, what Planning is proposing, is this acceptable only if it deviates from the development standards? Or are you saying, I don't know?
I think we haven't.
I, okay, you're saying no altogether, right?
No, I don't know.
Okay, you don't know? Well, and you're, I don't know...
I'm saying, I would rather you go back to what you proposed before P&amp;Z, which was that we, we're going to require circulation and stacking study for every, for every scenario, because if we only do it, if you follow the standards, we lose some of that, those impact analysis.
What I hear we're being asked is, one, we came back with a particular standard of review. We took that to P&amp;Z, we got some feedback, they thought, felt that was too much. So, we've tried to come up with an accommodation for that. Now, what I'm hearing from some councilmembers is, no, no, we want you to go back to where you were from the, from when we started this, restarted this with P&amp;Z. So, that's the conversation is, do we go back to requiring the traffics?
The, the onsite circulation and stacking study for all drive-throughs, or just for those that deviate from the standards?
So, that's the direction, that, the point, where the staff is trying to bring something, granted, it's a little different than what we presented to council the last time. Again, trying to listen to feedback, we try to maintain a little bit of review, but we've kind of modified that. But if council says, no, that's still not enough, or this is a big issue, it's a concern, you need to go back to what the original proposal was, we can do that. So, at some point, we're going to need to get that direction. We are proposing something less. What I hear from Councilmember Go-Forth, I'm correct, is, no, I would prefer you go back to where you started from.
Okay. Councilmember Spillsbury? Can, can I clarify then, because now, all I am is confused. So, what did the mayor say? Because he said he supports the staff recommendations. So, the new ones or the previous ones?
No, the, the ones that are in front of you, right.
The ones that are in front of us. So, so, Chris, if I'm correct, Mr. Brady, if I'm correct, the mayor and I said one thing, and Scott and Alicia said one thing, so until you hear from the other three, I don't think it's fair to say, no?
That's not my understanding of what the mayor said.
Okay. Because it's not fair for you to say, that's what the council's now suggesting, when we've only heard from four of us, and there's three more sitting up here.
No, no, no. I wasn't trying to allude to speaking for all the council. I said, some councilmembers, what I'm hearing.
No, I know, this is not even one of my concerns.
Maybe somebody can tell us it's keeping track, but I thought the mayor said he, he supports a study for every, not just on deviation, but I, maybe I heard that wrong. Is that what you...
I think it's, I think he was, we were correct.
Okay. You've had those conversations.
Well, they, the, the staff did yesterday. I wasn't...
You're looking confused.
I'm not looking confused.
Okay, I'm just going to chime in. I don't know, oh, okay.
We have Councilmember Freeman, and then Duff, and then I have comments.
I mean, if that's the majority of the council, that's fine, but let's hear from the majority of the council before we make a statement that the majority of the council says one thing versus the other. Sorry, just to be fair.
Councilmember Freeman?
So, I, I have an example, and I think Rachel can relate to this, is, in one of my, in district, I have an EOS, a McDonald's, and a Dutch Bros. And the McDonald's came up, and they had their site plan, they had everything there, but now, without this circulation, traffic study, I mean, I have cross-bleeding, I've got EOS athletes there working out, I've got Blue 32, I've got traffic mitigation that would go into McKellup's, go into Gilbert Road, and it's just not working. And so, since Dutch Bros did build a new facility further west, it's taken the pressure off the one on the corner. However, the one on the corner will probably be built into some type of drive-through in the future, and therefore, we're going to have the cross-traffic issues going on. What I'm concerned about is the infield development portion of this, on, on something converted into a drive-through, if that happens, if there's no restriction on drive-throughs, then we do need a traffic study or analysis to determine, is everything going to be safe and work out for our streets and everybody who's using the area? So, I'm, I'm with Councilmember Go-Forth.
That's fine, I just want to hear everyone's opinion.
And that's, that's where I stay. I don't think having the analysis is a bad thing, if they're doing it already. And so, we just require that as part of their application process, and it's over and done with, and staff reviews it, goes, that's good, or it doesn't. So, I'd like to hear from your input.
Yeah. Councilmember Duff? I'm, I'm...
My philosophy is that our development standards should be controlling as much as possible, so it's clear to the developers what our expectations are, and that we're not going into this long list of, well, the study, that's everything, and things just get stretched out, and just, I don't, I don't know. I, I support where we are, and when it deviates from the development standards, I think the development standards should have the controls that we're looking for in order to have good development, and it'd be the transparency for our development, developers looking, and for a concise manner in which we operate, through planning and zoning, through council. I feel like we're just expanding it so much that it is onerous. It is, and then, on top of it, we're going to throw a council use permit. Let us just make this sure this is going to last a lifetime. So, I support strong minimum development standards, the things that staff has suggested, and with the exception of CUPs, we'll get there, and tightening, making that as tight and clear and as possible to control these situations, and only when they deviate, then we need to see what those impacts are, like, as suggested.
Yeah, so, my, my, my sense, I was initially okay with this change, but after just having this discussion, I think, I think it makes it more complicated to have two set of different standards, right, to when you deviate, to you're not deviating, so as we see with developments across the board in various different types, I think developers try to, you know, manage their, you know, their, their developments to the base standards, and try to, you know, narrow that piece, but I think the, this, this, this ordinance is, is looking at the future, and I think the future development... But I think the, this ordinance is looking at the future, and I think the future developments, you know, we need to make sure that we can, you know, make sure that it works for the folks in those areas that they're, you know, having these drive-throughs. And so my stance is, I think simpler is to apply it, I guess, to everybody that is doing a drive-through. I think that's a simpler process than maybe having to, you know, when you deviate, you're requiring a stacking study when you're not, you're not. So I think it simplifies the process to understand, you know, all right, I need a stacking study or onsite circulation for everybody, right? Because we don't know how it's going to be affected, right? So in the future, you know, as far as you building that drive-through in that corner, or, you know, wherever you're building that piece. So I would go back to, you know, require for everybody.
Well, and the traffic, yeah, what we originally proposed.
So Vice Mayor, Council, just so that I'm clear, what I think I'm hearing from the council is that the original recommendation, not the modified recommendation?
Before, we're not modifying it since P&amp;Z. We're going to go back to what we presented council in the study session.
To require for everyone.
I think there is consensus, or majority.
And really, what we're saying here, again, nobody, the decision, all we're making is clarity about what has been put in the introduction of the ordinance. You have to vote on it again, and you can decide whether that works.
So, but can I just ask, so you're saying, you think this is simpler for the development community to just know upfront that they're going to have to do a study for every single development?
Yes.
Okay, I think they would disagree with you.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, Council, the only thing I think I would add is, as Councilmember Spillsbury said, they have a lot of this information anyway, so all we're asking them to do is to summarize it and synthesize it and give it to staff so we can evaluate it, to make sure that those external impacts, whether it's on, in the parking lot or on the road, that we truly are able to mitigate that.
So that wasn't clear to me, on whether they had to get new studies, or if they could use their own. Like, I haven't heard that brought up one single time, so that helps to clarify that at least. Keep trying to clear up things here.
So Mary, they can use their own study in their application process. I mean, that's been the...
Vice Mayor, Council, we're not asking for anything that they probably are not already looking at, and all they need to do is put it in a form that we can then use to make that evaluation.
Let me be clear, though, because we still have traffic engineers who will review it. And if they have questions or concerns, they will have them, you know, they will sometimes do it, but it may be the minimum, and maybe not quite... We need to get clarity. It still has to be reviewed by our traffic engineer. So yes, they do it, but sometimes we require them to do it a little more refined and a little more specific.
So Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager Brady, we're not asking for a traffic impact study. We have very specific requirements, Rachel, if you wanted to go to that slide, of what would be required in this study, that is a lot less onerous than what would be in a traffic study. So this is something I think planning staff would be able to evaluate. Of course, if we have to lean on our transportation engineers, we would, but a lot of this, we would be able to evaluate from the, because it's a deviation to a planning standard.
Councilmember Spillsbury.
So just your statement saying that we're not asking them to do anything they're not already doing, then makes me wonder why we even made this change since P&amp;Z.
Let's be clear, Mary, I want to be clarity of language here. The language that you had in the study session before, what did it require? What you have here on the side?
On the screen, on the screen here.
So that's what I hear, what I've heard from councilmembers, is supporting and not doing, because the alternative to this, your adjustment was, instead of doing this, was to do what? Only when there's a...
Vice Mayor, Council, that is correct. We would, the potential recommendation that we brought to council was, this, these requirements would only be done if they deviate from minimum standards, rather than, in the last recommendation, it was everyone would do the study.
So what I've heard, just clarifying, is, I've heard some councilmembers express, they would prefer this to go back to where it applies to everyone, not on the exception.
Vice Mayor, Council, that's what I heard also.
So that's where we're moving forward. Staff will be moving forward with that as part of the introduction.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, Alice, what else?
All right. So Council, the next set of requirements is for a 100-foot setback from residential uses or residential zoned properties. And this is specifically for drive-through facilities. It doesn't apply to pickup window facilities, or the ATM or teller windows, and this is because of the speaker box. So we have made some modifications to this over the time. Originally, in earlier iterations, we had suggested that there not be allowed to have drive-throughs in the neighborhood commercial district, where you have smaller commercial parcels in close proximity to residential neighborhoods. We since backed off and went with a more design standard approach to this, to provide that separation, to try to ensure that those residences are buffered from any sort of impact of these drive-through facilities. At our public meeting, we continued to hear feedback from stakeholders that they wanted a way to deviate from the standards. So we have included in here a provision that that could be modified if they provided a sound study as well. So that is the current recommendation. At the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, there was concern that it wasn't, there weren't, we didn't have hard decibel requirements in our recommendation, and that they felt it was kind of ambiguous for staff to be able to evaluate that noise and sound study. So we are recommending some changes to apply a minimum decibel in the sound study requirement. So that would be that at the property line, it not exceed the 60 decibel levels. For reference, that's the level for a normal conversation. But if they were exceeding that decibel level, they could also demonstrate that it's not an increase over the existing ambient noise there. Because oftentimes, road is creating, roadway traffic is creating higher levels than a 60 ambient. So if they weren't increasing the impacts over what's already existing, that could also be an acceptable condition. And we just have some figures on here for your reference about what typical decibel levels are. So ambient is typically 45 to 55 decibels, and if you're along a freeway or heavy traffic roadway, that's approximately 60 decibels. So that's what that suggestion is for at the property line as a minimum.
Councilmember Duff?
This might be a stupid question, but how do you know what the decibel level is before the development's built?
So through the sound study, it's, they go through, they take the existing measures. So they take measures from several different spots on the site, and then they have different standards for what the different mechanisms, the, you know, their boxes and things, what those create. It's very detailed. They have, kind of like our flight pass, where they show...
The contours.
The contours of where the noise kind of goes. And so they can, they can really evaluate on multiple levels, you know, they can separate out just from the speaker box, what that additional noise is, just from the additional traffic through the drive-through, what that additional noise is. So it really allows us to determine where those impacts are.
And Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, if I can add, we often see these for different uses that may have impacts. It just happens that this week at Planning and Zoning Board, there was a car wash, and they had a sound study done to show how they would not impact a residential area 300 feet away from them. So this is a common practice, there are acoustic engineers who do this, so it's not uncommon that we would get it so that a project can show us how they're not impacting those residential areas.
Yeah, and once again, this would only be required if they wanted to deviate from the base standard.
If they want to get inside that 100-foot.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So next has to do with our screening requirements. Currently, our zoning ordinance, it requires that drive-through lanes not be located parallel to arterial streets. But we do have a provision in there that if there are site constraints, that they can locate it adjacent to the arterial street, but then they have to provide a 40-inch screen wall. We are proposing that they add additional screening for this. So there would be two options, they could provide the 40-inch screen wall with additional landscaping in front of it, or they could provide an architecturally-integrated awning, canopy, or trellis system. And I think you probably have seen more of those come through the city now, where it's a system that goes over and actually across the drive-through, it's a decorative feature. And in that instance, we would still require some additional landscaping, but not at the level of the screen wall, because it does provide more of that vertical coverage. Next requirement here is for employee screening and protection. So we are recommending that when you have employees outside taking orders, that they be provided with a shade structure somewhere along the route, where they typically take orders, to provide them some refuge, and also that there be a raised pedestrian path between the lanes, so that they are separated from traffic to provide them a little more protection.
Question, Councilmember Spillsbury.
Sorry, just before we go off that, so a 40-foot, 40-inch high-screen wall, that's just a wall, or that's with an awning? The modification's saying awning, so is the wall just the wall?
So there'd be the two options. The 40-inch screen wall is what you typically see for, like, your parking lot screening, that pony wall.
Okay.
And the other option would be an integrated awning that goes across the drive-through.
And so that's what you're proposing?
As an alternative.
Okay, so that every, every drive-through would need to have, like, a decorative awning over it? No?
Only if they wanted to deviate from that requirement to be located parallel to an arterial street.
An arterial street. Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. So we wanted to go over some common questions that we received from the public that I'm guessing that you probably have received yourselves. So based on stakeholder feedback, I mean, from the development community, we continue to hear concerns that the council use approval would be costly, time-consuming, and arbitrary, that our, these goals from the city could be accomplished through design standards. So with this, we did address that through changing quite a few of our recommendations. Instead of having separation distance and concentration requirements, we went to an approach for design standards. Also heard the concern that our amendments were not in line with other jurisdictions, and that they were relaxing theirs, and we were making ours more strict. That goes back to kind of the last six months, where we really dug into other jurisdictions to understand what their requirements were and how we compared to them. And that is not what we found. We found that we were much more lenient in our regulations. From the residents, we continue to hear concerns about onsite congestion and concerns about overflow into our roadways, expressing desire for more out-of-car shopping experiences, higher-quality developments, and the sentiment that they just feel like there is enough quick-serve restaurants in the city already, and just aren't really wanting to see more of those developed. So some of the questions that we got after our last public meeting, we spent a lot of time talking about this onsite circulation and stacking study. So originally, when we had come to council, we had proposed a traffic impact study, which is, that's kind of your highest level, full-blown traffic analysis. And it looks at a lot of the effects on roadways, not just onsite. We had revised that, as you had seen, to really make the requirements less intense and to focus more on the onsite circulation and those impacts. However, we did have a lot of concern from residents that they felt like we were backing off of our recommendation, and they wanted to see how the impacts, the cumulative impacts of these developments would be impacting our roadways. So that's why we did go back in and make additional modifications to make sure that there was a requirement to address those off-site cumulative impacts. Based on some of those conversations as discussed about the 100-foot setback to residential, we did modify those provisions to include that allowance for the sound study to be able to deviate from those standards. We heard a lot of requests from the community to allow deviations to these development standards. And what we tried to explain to the community is that our zoning ordinance already has several processes in place that allows for deviations from development standards, and I have those listed on the page in front of you. They wanted to have specific language within this chapter for drive-throughs, but because these are citywide processes, it really was not appropriate to put them specifically in this chapter. It doesn't align with kind of our practice and our format of how our ordinance is laid out. We've heard concern from people that existing pad sites would not be able to develop under these current standards. And those are, when I say existing pad sites, so if you have a commercial center that still has, you know, a little parcel along the street frontage. Back to our processes we have in place, we have several processes that have been created over the years to try to incentivize the development and infill of these parcels. So I have a couple of those processes listed up on the screen for you here. One of them is a substantial conformance improvement permit. That's for sites that are developed, but that are non-conforming. So non-conforming in the sense that they do not meet our current development standards. We have a process in place which allows them to expand or to change uses without having to bring the site fully into conformance. So it allows for them to make incremental improvements to those sites, to be able to redevelop. We also have a development incentive improvement permit, which is specific to bypass parcels or what we more typically call infill sites. Oftentimes, those are smaller parcels that may have a hard time meeting development standards because of site constraints. And so this allows them to deviate from certain standards to be able to develop that site. And then lastly, you're very familiar with our planned area development overlay and our bonus intensity zone overlay, which allows applicants to propose deviations to development standards as well. There was also some comments going around that these proposed amendments would make existing facilities non-conforming and unable to develop if they were burned down. Once again, our zoning ordinance already has processes that cover these circumstances. If a property was non-conforming and burnt down, they would be allowed to rebuild to their current standards as they were today. If they wanted to make modifications to do expansion, at that point, it would require further review and approval. And one of the previous comments that we had heard from Councilmember Spillsbury, our questions, was about, with our proposed changes for the CUPs, there was a question of how many more cases would be coming to city council if we adopted these amendments. So staff went back and we polled all the number of drive-through cases that came through for approval between January of 2021 and June of 2023. There were a total of 71 cases that were processed. 12 of those went to city council for approval already because they either required a use permit, a rezone, or were requesting deviations that required city council's approval. With the text amendments, we identified that there would have been five additional projects that would have had to come to council for approval of a council use permit. That concludes the presentation, and we're happy to assist in any discussions or questions.
Perfect. Questions, comments? I'm sure, Councilmember Spillsbury, continue.
Okay, well, first of all, I just want to say thank you. I expressed it to you personally, so I hope you know that I really appreciate, I think there's been too much work done on this at this point, right? We're all just like, I just keep getting more and more confused. But I do appreciate the great lengths that the city has gone to, to make sure that all of the stakeholders' voices have been heard. When I went to the last public meeting that was had, back-to-back comments were developers feeling like this still was too restrictive, and a resident saying that this was going to incentivize more drive-throughs. And it just was so clear to me how, how hard this is for you guys to try to figure out what the balance is, because you're literally hearing not only different things from stakeholders, but from council. And you're trying to go with something that council wants when we don't have an agreement on our council. So I just want to recognize this is super, super challenging. I also... I also want to acknowledge that we all have different districts. Like, your district in five and Councilwoman Summers in six are completely different than almost anyone else's parts of one. I mean, but so I think that's what's making this challenging, too, is because they might hear from their residents something that I've never heard once in three years that I've been on council, right? Because my district's full of big families and we love our drive-throughs. So anyways, I just, I think that has to be acknowledged as well and maybe why we have such difference of opinions in a lot of this. I do have a lot of infill and redevelopment opportunities. And when I talk to the development community, they're very concerned. And you just addressed it three slides ago of all of the different ways that this can still be possible. But it feels to them like there's just too much discretion with an individual planner and it's not clear and that they might not even attempt to try it because it's not clear of what exactly we'll have to go into. I wanted to, since we skipped it, I'm going to go back to it, slide six. I think that, you know, if you look at the the green, that's a compelling, no, okay, sorry. On five, that is a compelling slide that shows Mesa has way, way, way more opportunity by right to have drive-throughs. But if you go to six and you look at the existing drive-through per capita, leave Scottsdale of it because they're a different, I don't, I don't think Scottsdale's comparable to Mesa. It never has been. But Gilbert and Chandler, if you look at our per capita, we're in the middle of Gilbert and Chandler. If you look at our per acre, we're right there with Gilbert, almost exactly with Gilbert and with Chandler. So this whole thought of like, oh, Mesa just has so many more drive-throughs than anywhere else. Well, we're twice as big. And if you look at those numbers, those are the compelling numbers to me. I wanted to bring up something that, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to be too long, but I have a lot of thoughts on this. I've put a lot of time and energy into this. So at the planning and zoning meeting last week, it was recommended for denial by all five members that were there. We had two that were absent. They didn't feel comfortable moving forward. When they asked if they could continue it, staff told them that we, that was not an option and that we needed to move forward with it. And that that you felt comfortable as staff that you were going to, that you that you had what you wanted to present to council and that you weren't going to make changes is essentially what what I heard you say at P&amp;Z. And so when I opened up my presentation and saw that there were changes made, I'm now just, and I talked to Mr. Brady about this, but it is a little bit concerning to me that I I am very, I value the P&amp;Z board's opinion. That's why we have a planning and zoning board, so that they can vet things before it comes to council. And so I do put a lot of value on what they have to say. And I don't feel like they got to see what we're now seeing a week later. So that's a little bit concerning to me. I get that there are minor tweaks and that you, after you told them you couldn't make changes, you did, you went back and listened to what they had to say and and rewatched it or whatever. But that kind of is concerning to me, that we didn't get like P&amp;Z's full approval or denial on what we're asking to look at today. I I do think it just needs to be mentioned again that the whole reason that this started is because some of our districts were getting inundated with residents that were upset at so many drive-throughs and they wanted sit-down restaurants. And there's absolutely nothing in any of this that we're doing that will bring more sit-down restaurants. And we're doing other things as a city for that to happen. But I'm just, I'm just wondering how this turned into this two-year nightmare when it's really not addressing what all the concerns of those residents are. Maybe we've come up with more concerns as we've gone. I also just feel like the market is the decision-maker in this. If sit-down restaurants were were going to make them money, they would do sit-down restaurants. And so drive-throughs make developers money and people vote with their money and they're going to drive-throughs. And so, which, again, I know you're not saying we're not going to have drive-throughs. But and then just the last thing I wanted to comment on is that I still do feel like the council use permits for all of these fills over-regulating. I think I just don't know why we're doing it. I feel like it, we all know that as soon as any decision has to go to council, it then becomes a political thing and they've got to play the game and they've got to talk to all seven, the mayor and all six council members. That's a lot of, that's a lot of work for a developer to to come in and to, it adds a lot more to their process, money, time, resources. And and that does feel very onerous to me to do that. Although one of the planning and zoning members made the point that if it's only five more that would have been in the year, then that's really just in the margin of error. So anyways, that's a lot of thoughts, but I have, I have a lot of thoughts, so I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
I think we have some great dialogue here concerning this. And, you know, it's kind of a conundrum. I think we have four options, do nothing, you know, Councilmember Spillsbury's point, or we do the deviations, or we do some of the upgrades that the majority of us talked about. What was the fourth one I was thinking of? But I I'm still listening to everything. I'll be honest with you, I'd like to stay where I'm at as far as my decision-making. And I guess that's where I'm going to end up. And I I understand your concerns. I think they're valid, but at the end of the day, we have responsibilities at council to hear these projects if it moves forward. And and then we have to listen to our residents and our community, what is acceptable. I mean, I have people in my area that want a certain drive-through. They're not coming and they they want a certain sit-down restaurant. They're not building. I don't know why, but at the end of the day, I think my comments are, I'll just stay where I'm at. And the, oh, the fourth one was, to Councilmember Spillsbury's point, can we kick this back to planning and zoning for their review? The whole thing? And let them vet it out again? And that would probably be something I, you know, I, to this, what's been said is maybe planning and zoning needs to hear the changes of these amendments and let them vote on it, and then they can come back to council with their consensus. Yes or no? So I guess, to your point, I would say, hearing all of this, I would like to refer it back to P&amp;Z. That would be my last comment. Thank you.
Councilmember go for it, Duff?
I'd like to maybe address the council use permit. Besides the 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 number not being that much higher, if if an applicant is asking to deviate from our general plan or from the purpose and the intent of our code, that's a policy decision. That's not, and I understand that it was said that we are substituting market-driven data analysis by an export for the will of the council. That's not, that's not the only factor, in fact, not even a driving factor for a policy decision by the council. So that, you know, that's a driving, that's a profitability factor for them. But when you want to deviate from what we, our general plan and our, as I said, the purpose and the intent of the code, that should be a policy question and it should come back to us. That's how I feel on that. I know it, it does, it adds time and money. But those are, those are policy issues and that's our job on that. And that's how I feel about it. This has been a balance. I mean, I don't know why it started. I wasn't here. But I I look at it as we start, for me, I start with my community's values and what they're, what they're saying to me that they value. It's, and and what I've heard is they want to manage the negative impacts of traffic. They want us to protect their pedestrian safety and walkability. They want us to commit and carry out the vision of the plan and the code. And they want to have an enhanced image of their community. And I, and I think it's been your job to figure out how to balance those values that they've articulated through us as their representatives with not disincentivizing private investment in Mesa. And we all want that. We want it, our communities want it, but they don't want it if it's to the detriment of what they value. That's, that's my, that's been my experience in talking to constituents. I've talked to a lot of them about this. You're right, Julie, there, it differs in in the district. But let me also say, the the sit-down, and this does not cover sit-down restaurants at all. This does not address that. And the city, I think, has been, we've taken a different approach. We said, we hear you, that is an issue to some. I don't know if that's a false narrative or not, that we don't have, I haven't looked at the data. But sometimes, you know, in this case, maybe perception is reality. This is how a lot of constituents feel, that they don't have some of the places that they'd like to see. So we've said, we'll go out and we're going to do some research. We're going to hire some experts to help us figure this out, attract the ones you say you want, and maybe along the way, figure out why they're not already here. Is there something the city is doing or not doing that we could change? And and that's a whole different issue. I think most of our community understands that. So even if you take away that issue, they still have concerns. And it's the ones that I mentioned. And I think that's what the changes address. And lastly, I'll say, I I recognize, Councilmember Duff has said this through every conversation, that there is a bigger conversation to be had about the physical commercial developments and the street design that supports those and helps businesses to thrive. Please understand, for those listening, I I recognize that is, that's another conversation to have. Some people think we cannot have that in a vacuum. We can't have this discussion without that discussion. I think we can, but I hope to have that combined discussion of the development design and the street design at some point soon. So those are, those are my thoughts. I I support what you've, what you've proposed here today, with the exception of I would require a circulation and stacking study every, for every proposal, napkin.
Councilmember Duff?
You know, I think the, one of the reasons this is so messy is we have all these different subjects of aesthetics, which we're addressing here as far as the presentation and the impact and the traffic. You know, what does that look like to have a drive-through, right? Then there's the value statement, whether you value drive-throughs or not. I don't know, I'm more concerned about these title loans and check-cashing places if we wanted to control values. They have a detriment on our residents. And then we have, you know, the the traffic issue. And the traffic keeps an offset about people wanting more pedestrian-oriented places in which they don't feel like their life is at stake at all times unless you're in a car. So like Councilmember go forth, you know, mentioned and it's setting the place right and creating the environment. But we have a certain environment here with these pads. And I want to get into the CUP thing. So currently, what zoning districts are drive-throughs allowed by right? Right now, like without proposed changes is so confusing for me. I can't move to follow this.
I think it was in the previous presentation, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I was trying to.
That's where you have that, that's why we provided that graphic, that twenty-one percent of the city's area by right, that was the point of that, yeah.
Right, and and I just was wondering what those zoning districts are. Because when we talk about CUP, from where I am right now, I don't like CUPs on everything. I think it is a very convoluted, confusing place. Like I said, I believe in our zoning standards and ordinances to be as tight as possible and only have the exceptions come forward. So I believe in a CUP for neighborhood commercial. I want to protect the environment, having a neighborhood shopping area that is friendly to walk or bike to and having the environment to be people-oriented. Now, we have a lot of arterials that are moving really fast and they are not near the neighborhood and stuff like that. And we see a lot of drive-throughs, especially in the new. So do we really need a council use permit in that environment? So I I'm proposing a council use permit for neighborhood commercial, keeping an SUP on heavy industrial. SUP, the Board of Adjustment makes that decision, right? Is that correct?
It can be through the Board of Adjustment if it's just the use. If it's accompanying a site plan, the Planning and Zoning Board has the authority to approve the special use permit.
Okay. And not do CUPs on these others and just have our improved design standards or improved standards in which staff is regulating and looking at the impacts within that property and doing their job and not having it to go through an extra sixty days and how much money for our CUP and and beyond the costs there and and time. Um, let's see. Okay. Yeah, that's pretty much it, pretty much it. Is, I wanted to have a council discussion on CUPs if we like it on basically everything.
Councilmember Summers?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, no, I I'm happy with the CUPs that are in place. And I even wonder why we haven't addressed the issue for neighborhood commercial and that. You know, neighborhood commercial, really, when you look at the the standard is for that area that's around a half mile to two miles in direction from a community. And it's meant for things like stores and restaurants, particularly sit-down areas and convenience for the community. But it's also a place where we try to to build place, a sense of place in a community. And you don't get that when you drive through. But the CUP hasn't been added to that particular use. It's, and when you read the zoning code, and I have it up in front of me, the next step up is limited commercial, which specifically spells out where drive-throughs would go. So really, a community commercial should be included because that's where we want to make a sense of community in that type of commercial. On the other spectrum, using the CUP within the industrial areas, as Mary has already indicated, is about preserving that space for jobs. And there's a, there's an industrial area not far from, well, in my district or the airport that looks to stack four in a row and for, in in an industrial zone, which should be space-preserved for the highway jobs and advanced manufacturing. Now, I'm not saying that none of these would be an appropriate number. Zero would be appropriate number because I think you do need to have some of that. But having council eye on on how that development happens. Again, to Mr. Brady's point, all we're asking for is the same type of standard that we are seeing successfully utilized in Gilbert and Chandler and Tempe and Scottsdale. The exact same standard, even with these changes, these changes are still lighter, less onerous than those standards are in the other commercial. But I'd also like to address the issue, you know, the economy. People say, well, this is market-driven, this is what people are wanting because they vote with their money. I, they vote with their money because that's, they go there because that is the only option available in certain areas of the city, particularly on the east side. When you look west, Stapley is a great example of having multiple opportunities. If you're at work and you need to get something quick, there's a Smash Burger there, a Chick-fil-A there. If you want to sit down, there's a Charleston's there. There is a diversity of opportunity for people to find something to eat, whatever their budget or whatever their time. And we lack that in a lot of places. And we lack that in a lot of places. People are voting with their money. Their, people in my community are traveling to Queen Creek, they're traveling to Gilbert. They used to come to Mesa. One, one mall that we used to have with restaurants in it is now a pile of rubble. Second one is on a slow decline and looking to reinvent itself. People are voting with their money. They're going to other communities. We are the second lowest per capita sales tax revenue generator of any city. Second lowest. So, yeah, people are voting with their money, they're going elsewhere. What kind of city do we want to be? What we want Mesa to be? And that's partially up to this council to make those decisions. This is really about trying to get a diversity of uses, encouraging the diversity of uses, because once the land is used up, once you put in four, five, eight drive-through restaurants, that's what you're going to have in perpetuity. You don't have an opportunity, very often, to reinvent yourself and to create that sense of place. And that's what we should really be focusing on. Going to the, to the point of Councilmember go forth, what are the values of our community, and what are the perceptions of the community? So, I don't find these to be unreasonable. I think it will be just one tool to help us build a better Mesa, and to create that diversity of opportunity in this particular segment of our economy that has been used successfully elsewhere. So, I, I support moving it forward as is, with the one change that was added for the traffic flow study, and look forward to more commentary and comment.
All right. And I'll, I'll just add, I think, you know, initially, I was one of the trail makers to bring this up, I think, two years ago, to, to the councils, and Mr. Thompson, previous council member. But, you know, it was through Valley Concerns, and I think, you know, definitely, you know, a couple, couple things I wanted to address in my conversations to planning staff, to see what we can do in the following. I think, design standards, you know, looking at design standards, how we can apply, you know, better design standards as we move forward, and, and, and ensure that, you know, we get the top-quality designs here in Mesa, like they're getting somewhere else. And I think part of this discussion has led to that realization, as I, I think, that, you know, we, we're, we're working towards that, those pieces in, in this front. The, the second, you know, specifically on the neighborhood commercial, I think we had some examples in West Mesa where it, it went through the SVP process, but there wasn't, uh, uh, any feedback that we could provide as a council where, you know, residents could chime in on some specific developments that happened. I think that, that was something that I, I, I heard, especially the, the ones on facing arterials, and that goes back to design standards, right, and looking at these, these, these changes in adding, you know, awnings, or just different options that, you know, aesthetically could, could, could improve the, you know, the walkability pieces, or, or, you know, just the look and feel of, of these drive-throughs, when they're placing it in, in, in these areas of town where it could be an issue for residents, and just, you know, the aesthetics piece. And, and I think the, the third piece was mirroring kind of what other municipalities are, have in, in their, in their ordinance, right, on this end. I think, though we're, we're different in some pieces than others, I, I think there's a good balance here of looking at other nearby new municipalities, and how we are applying to what work, my work in Mesa for the future. And I think that, that was my frame when I, I guess, started this conversation, is, is looking at, you know, the, these items, and how we can have a process to, you know, have, have an opportunity to, to, to address these, these concerns that I had in, in the drive-through process, right? I, I think there's going to be drive-throughs that are going to come in, I think, in having this applied. I, I don't feel as too onerous, like other comments I've made, of other, other cities, right? And, and so, I, I'm okay moving the, the direction of moving it forward with the, the change of the, the stacking, applying it to, to all of them, so that's my comments.
But.
I just want to.
I know, Councilmember Freeman, I think Councilmember Freeman offered, you know, sending it back to planning, so I think that's.
Well, yeah, so right now, what I'm hearing, and again, I'm just throwing it out there as what I've heard, but specifically, is, right now, without hearing any other comment, what we would be doing is provide, moving this forward with introduction, and the change for council on Monday, but the only, the change we would be doing is now going back on the traffic analysis to apply to all proposals. So that would, that's what I've heard from at least four of the council members, and that, that would be the direction, unless I hear a shift from that direction, so.
Yeah. Councilmember Spilsbury?
I also just would feel better if we sent it back to P and Z, but I don't know that we have four opinions on that, and with the mayor not being here, I don't know how we could possibly know that, so. That would make me feel better about it.
Yeah, again, unless I hear other direction to do that.
Well, just to add, I mean, what's the rush?
Well.
You know, we've been two and a half years, I know we'd like to.
That's the thing.
Before we're done.
And the dilemma is, the dilemma is, we are holding back on many other initiatives. We can't bring those forward until this gets done, because it's consuming staff. But that's up to the, again, it's a policy decision.
What's that?
I feel like, I feel like the, the staff has addressed most of the concerns. My one issue with P and Z is they didn't actually offer any changes and suggestions. That was their opportunity. They claimed there were too many to propose, it would take them hours beyond their meeting. To me, if, if you don't have, that was your public opportunity to, to provide feedback and, and suggestions, and it wasn't done, so.
That's why they asked to continue it, though, and they were told they couldn't, so.
So if they have hours' worth of suggestions, that's not where we're at, I think. We're, you know.
Well, maybe.
So and remember, staff did follow up with P and Z after the meeting.
Well, yeah, but you were the presenters to the P and Z, and your comment was that you met with staff, some of them afterwards, and got some suggestions, and made some proposed changes. And are they good with that?
So, Vice Mayor, Council, what we did after the P and Z hearing, and I just want to clarify one thing, I think that the comment that was made to P and Z was when they wanted to continue it, I wasn't sure what they wanted staff to look at if we continued it, and they couldn't articulate that, which is why we asked for the vote. So it wasn't that we weren't willing to listen to any changes that they wanted, they didn't clarify what that was for a continuation, so I didn't know what I was continuing it for. So I just wanted to clarify that. After the hearing, our director, Nana Apia, he talked to several of the board members, and tried to clarify with them what their concerns were. Staff also went back through the transcript to pull out what their major concerns were. We have synthesized that into those four points. And then we went and we discussed what we thought could be a good compromise for council to consider, to address some of their concerns, and that's what we brought to you today as it related to the circulation study and to the separation from residential. With the CUP and with the waiver, we didn't see any need for any recommended changes, which is why we didn't come with any additional recommended changes. So, we tried to address what we, we had heard, what we had read in the transcript, about what their major concerns were with those two issues.
And we've been getting feedback from council members about wanting to take action on this sooner than later, but again, that's why you get to have those discussions here today. So we're trying to be responsive on both sides.
So is it a consensus then to move forward?
That's what.
Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I, that's what I've heard, I've heard direction otherwise.
He needs direction, not.
Yeah, the direction I have heard, and again, you'll have Monday to make this decision again, but the direction I've heard from at least four council members is we're moving forward to the introduction on Monday, but with the change of rolling back the traffic analysis to apply to all applications.
It's not the traffic analysis, right?
Traffic, sorry.
Circulation.
Vice Mayor, Council, that's correct, the onsite circulation and stacking study.
No, you're, yeah, correct, thanks for correcting me on that.
It's like CUPs.
So anyway, but you'll have an opportunity on Monday again, but that's what we'll be presenting on Monday for the, on the, that's what we'll post for the agenda for Monday.
Perfect. I, I, I think we, we have another, you know, conversation on Monday and go from there.
And again, yes, just introduction, and then you'll have another opportunity after that.
Yeah.
The vote will determine that.
Yep.
We're just introducing it, so.
Yeah, it's an introduction.
What is the timeline for?
So introduction on the second, and when would the?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Which is also on the hotels and everything stuff.
So, let go. Okay, so that finishes, yeah, I think we're done with 2B then.
All right, so that is done. Fun times here. Item three, item three is to acknowledge the receipt of committee minutes. Do you have a motion? Councilmember Spilsbury, second by Councilmember Freeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item number four, current events and conferences attended, who would like to start?
Councilmember Spilsbury?
Just two things really quick. Yesterday was the United Food Bank Breakfast, celebrating their 40th year, and a lot of us were there, and just want to thank them for all the great work they're doing in the Valley. And then tomorrow is the official kickoff for the new exhibit at the IDEA Museum. It's called Luminous, The Art of Light. It's so cool. So everyone be sure to go take your kids and grandkids and your significant other and go see that great exhibit at the IDEA Museum.
Perfect. Councilmembers, Councilmember Duff?
Yeah, of course. While you mention that, IDEA Museum is great, and also, the Natural History Museum has a introduction of their new exhibition, the Mammal Installation, is looking at some prehistoric mammals and climate change. So that, we're doing for members only on Friday, it's not too late to become a member, and then it'll open to the general public from there. And as far as what I've been up to, on Saturday, I was with a year, Mayor's Youth Committee doing a service project in United Food Bank, and we packed bags, I forgot how many bags, it was a lot of them. Had a great time doing that, and thank you to all the high school students that, in the youth committee that participated in that project. Last week, I spoke at a Visit Mesa Step, Student Tourism Exploration Program, high school students exploring jobs and hospitality and tourism. That's a great event. Vice Mayor Hareta and I was, were at the International Day of Peace Celebration at MCC that same day, and that night was the Kahoots' one-year anniversary that they've been here in downtown, in Mesa. It's good. Yesterday, most of us on Slipmark, talk about that, or some of the MPD promotions and award ceremony, I feel like I talked too much. Okay. Most of us were at the Mesa Police Department of Promotion and Award Ceremony yesterday. A lot of great recognitions, but I do want to say congratulations to the class of 21 on 20 years. We've recognized many of the officers in, in that celebration. And last night, I went to the Tesis Norra, which is the Snorin Sister Cities in Mexico, who, Arizona Sister Cities, and did a celebration of the foods and culture, and that was over, that was hosted by the Consular Mexico's, Consular General over in Phoenix, and it was a very nice event. Thank you.
Perfect. Councilmember Summers, anything? All right. Next item, Mr. Brady, schedule future meetings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, Monday, the second, we will have a, the council meeting, but we'll also have a study session prior to. We'll begin an early start, 4:45 PM. We have a presentation on sober living facilities, and then we would invite the council, if you're available today, I think we've already started serving the food, but you can join the city employees for the Celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. It's a free lunch with live music, it goes from 10 to 1 PM. Thank you.
Is there a location for that?
Mesa ours.
Mesa ours. Where we had it before, out on the front area, there.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
So moved. So moved, perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.